I was interested to see how this is going.
Not the longer.
Yeah.
For those in the audience who are running late, we have an internet issue to be able to video. So it's like the old days on your TV stage on all the channels in the country. That's why we haven't already started. As soon as we get an AOK, we'll start to video.
We've got me a regular.
There was so much talking about this a while ago. I guess I'm not sure if I can. Yeah, I know. I don't have a shirt on, so I'm more of a shirt. I think we're just starting.
It was interesting to see. Not the longer.
Yeah.
He doesn't have a shirt on. Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
I don't have a shirt on.
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 I don't have a shirt on. For those in the audience who are running late, we have an internet issue to be able to video. So it's like the old days on your TV stage on all the channels in the country. So that's why we haven't already started. So as soon as we get an AOK, we'll start to video.
You've got me a regular.
There was so much talking about this a while ago. I guess we know this. We got to call a colleague and she likes to go by her own hands. She didn't see that I called you out. She said, oh, we had this. She goes, I, 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 she must say good. I mean, you know, do you want to say? Like, uh, I was preparing for the hour. I've seen you in the early days before twice. Everybody's looking at it. It was about these short second glasses. I'm only talking about some of it. So during the rest, yeah. JP believed it. He said it was the time. Okay. Yeah, I told him. All good.
That's right. I mean.
There's three, like, five.
I just, I think you call me. I think I did.
You're supposed to.
Somebody. So this is for. I was just bringing it out.
Yeah.
I thought like.
Yeah. Yeah, she's, she's got, she's working on it now. And I do. About eighty-five. Right, right. Good?
Yeah.
Sure. Is that positive? As long as we can get started. Okay. Uh, it's like we have reception. Uh, so good evening, everybody. Happy New Year to all of you. Um, we want to get started on our committee of the poll meeting for January twenty, twenty-three, at six oh five PM. Roll call, please.
Christian Harshambo.
Here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Christian Root.
Here.
Christian Seaman.
Here.
Christian Cotto.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
It's noted that Commissioner Lusson is not able to attend.
And correct, immediate correction for me. I might have said January twenty, January twelve. Okay? So we cut the right day, my help. Okay. Um, additions or changes to the agenda? I would like to put on the table a couple of things. I would like to move up in the agenda, the Kemper Sports budget presentation, so they can kind of do their thing and go home. And if no one has any other issues, I'd like to do remarks from visitors after unfinished business can be boring business. So no objects? Great, that's the way we're gonna do it. All right, so agenda item number three, communications. JP?
A couple of articles. One in the Chicago Tribune for the Kemper Sports announcement regarding the collaboration with Winnetka Park District and the Winnetka Golf Club. Thank you. There's also an article for the IDNR response to, excuse me, Park District response to the IDNR for the two oh five Sherwin Road application for format. And then also a parent-child date night article, also in the Tribune. So that's, that's in your package.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so instead of new business, we're gonna go to unfinished business. Um, so I am six point one for Kemper Sports. You are on the dot. Before you get started, for anyone who is online, we had an internet issue, so that's why we started late. So certainly apologize for all that stuff, but every now and again, the internet comes and gets here. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody. I just want to introduce everybody. I know everybody's met, but Mary Kate Walsh, our regional director of sales and marketing, Matt Johnson, our general manager at Winnetka Golf Club, and Dave Rowley, our regional agronomist who supports the Chicagoland region and specifically Winnetka. So just to talk a little bit about the budget process that we went through with compiling the budget. We met as, as a team. We met with Costa, we met with John, we met with Kyle, we met with the entire Winnetka Park District team, and really scrubbed the budget from a zero-based budget procedure, which was put together previously into what you're gonna see a little bit about us talk about today. So, um, we're gonna talk a little bit about budget risks, we're gonna talk a little bit about revenue highlights, we're gonna go through some items to drive revenue, we'll take a look at the organizational chart, labor impacts, expense highlights, some fee changes, and then the financial overview. So I think you have seen this slide before. I think Matt had put it together, it was in one of his budget presentations, to talk a little bit about some of the risks behind the budget. Labor being one of them. There's obviously a reduced labor pool. Everybody's hearing about it from your restaurants to your golf courses to any, any industry really whatsoever, law firms, you name it, there's, there's a labor pool issue, along with wage compression, where we're, we're having to pay a higher hourly rate or a higher, higher salary for some of the positions that we have. So you're gonna see in this budget, a payroll number that might be a little bit higher than normal, but it's still going to be lower than what was, what was presented in the original budget. Weather. Weather is going to affect Rowan. I didn't, we didn't factor weather into the budget. We're gonna make the assumption that the weather's gonna be perfect all summer long. We're gonna make the assumption that, that we're gonna get some nice rain days in August and September, we're gonna help that turf grow in.
We can make it rain.
And revenue, of course. Revenue is, you know, is obviously an important part of any budget, making sure that we can grow revenue. Now, we obviously are looking at alternate revenue sources at Winnetka Golf Club as opposed to holds one through eighteen, on the, on the eighteen hole course, and holds one through nine on the, on the par three. Some revenue highlights. We are proposing a, you're gonna see a proposal for a budget of four hundred and nine thousand in total revenue. This is up from a, a budget that you previously saw of roughly about three hundred thousand. We're allocating a hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred to the driving range, twenty-eight thousand and change on the merchandise side, instruction of a hundred and seventy, and cell tower revenue of forty. And they kind of put a comparison together. The range revenue previously, the original budget was set at ninety-five, the instruction was at one forty-nine, and the merchandise was at thirteen. So there's a little bit of, of increases in all different areas, and we'll talk a little bit as we get further about how those increases are gonna come, come to light. So building business, obviously, marketing is a huge part of achieving any revenue success on the budget side. Mary Kate is here, but before I turn over to her for a little bit, I want to talk about what we've done so far at the golf course on, on the marketing side. Many of you have belonged to or follow the Facebook page. We've got Matt. Matt has been starting the Tips Tuesdays. It's been very well followed the last, this week. We also, on the marketing side, have started to meet with the men's club. I think Mr. James was there and Mickey was there as well in the meeting we had last Friday with the men's club. So we've started those outreach programs, which are gonna help build, drive revenue this year, but it's also gonna drive revenue in future years of, at the golf club. How is it gonna drive revenue this year? We're gonna bring the men's league back into the golf course. We're gonna, we're trying to, we talked to the men's league about merchandise nights, we talked to the men's league about driving range, and we're helping the men's league find alternate golf sources for two thousand and twenty-three, which will then catapult them back to Winnetka Golf Club in two thousand and twenty-four and beyond. Because if the men's league can stay together and the community can stay golfing together, they will come back to the golf course. I'm happy to report that we have found a location for some of those folks to play on Saturdays and Sunday mornings, and we have filled all the slots that we had available at this time with, with, with your players. Other marketing outreaches, I know Mary Kate's working on some, a, a website enhancement with, with Gracie, they're working on a website enhancement, which will continue to drive people to the website and continue to drive revenue as we go along. Additionally, building business, building revenue, teaching is a huge component. Matt, you wanna kind of touch on where we're at?
So we have, we've had discussions with two third-party firms that are both, the Kemper family's very familiar with. One of them's Richard Franklin, that runs a great programming up at Lake Forest, and the other one is for golf practice, that operates out of Canal Shores, as well as Deerfield. It's actually the old Greve of T firm that actually started at Winnetka Golf Club back in nineteen eighty-nine. So they're both very nimble, they, they provide a lot of visual cues, so it's, it should be a lot of activity and a lot of engagement from the kids that are on there. So we're looking forward to a product that can keep their attention while the golf course is down, even though it's just gonna be driving each time, but we think we've got two really qualified candidates to be able to present that to everybody.
And I think it's important to mention that we've had, Kyle has been part of those discussions with both groups. We've asked Kyle to sit in on, on some of those, on some of those meetings, and those groups, we, we will, we will come forward to, to Kyle and to John sometime, sometime in the next week with our recommendation as to how to move forward. So programming will be launched, we're looking to launch it at the end of next week. Organizational chart, I think some of you have seen this before. The budget was built with, obviously with Matt as our general manager. We have our, we built it with a director of agronomy and a superintendent on the ground side, along with a mechanic, and then our laborers, our hourly laborers. Our laborers consist of five laborers, three on an hourly full-time basis and two on an hourly seasonal basis on the course and ground side. On the golf operations side, we built that budget with some hourly pro shop staff to work the pro shop during the summer, and some hourly range outside service folks to handle the driving range with the third-party instruction, with the clinics going. There'll be a constant picking of range balls in order to keep everything moving. And then on the food and beverage side, an hourly physician. So those labor impacts, third-party instruction will, will certainly reduce our labor requirement in the, in the golf shop. We've eliminated the position of assistant mechanic. In the years past, there's been two mechanics on hand. We're gonna run with one mechanic, which is very traditional for the golf course setting. We're gonna run with, we have three grounds, full-time hourlies, two grounds, seasonals, the director of agronomy, the superintendent. We anticipate the golf shop, now this is fluid, but we anticipate the golf shop being staffed seven thirty to, you know, nine o'clock-ish in season. What does that equate to? Five hundred and eighty-four thousand in gross payroll, and after, after taxes and benefits, it equates to seven hundred and forty thousand in, in payroll. That is, that, the original budget was budgeted, that you saw, was at seven hundred and ninety-two thousand. So coming in about fifty, forty, forty, forty-four thousand favorable to the original budget. On the expense side, we've got, so some highlights, we've got repair and maintenance of equipment set at twenty-five thousand on the ground side. You guys saw our original budget of forty thousand. We did increase all utilities, three percent, electric, gas, et cetera. And the budget that we, that we made on the ground side has eighty-five thousand in bunk, in sand. That's for the bunker sand, the greenside bunker sand and top dressing. So the bunkers will need to be re-sanded once they're done. And fertilizers and chemicals at nine thousand. Total expenses on the, on the, on the, on the admin side is seventy-eight thousand for grounds, utilities total is forty-three. So seventy-eight thousand is the, is the, from the, from the park district, correct?
Correct.
Fee changes, driving range, large bucket, thirteen dollars for large buckets, small buckets are ten dollars. Group instruction, the rates will vary on group instruction, it'll depend on what, 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 what the, the instruction is for that particular timeframe, whether it's a Saturday morning, in a one-hour session, or a during the week, four-day-a-week or five-day-a-week session. Those will, those will vary on the rates. There will be a revenue share with our third party, and we will continue our private instruction with our, with our staff on hand. So the overall revenue, again, four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred dollars is what we're budgeting on the revenue side versus what you guys saw earlier was three hundred thousand, and what you did this year was one point eight million this year. You can see that there's been no revenue budgeted for greens fees, no revenue budgeted for cart fee for obvious reasons. On the payroll side, course and grounds payroll, three hundred and eighty-two thousand and change compared to a projection of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, what you spent this year. On the, on the pro shop side, we're looking at ninety, or forty thousand versus two hundred and seventy-six thousand, what you spent this year. And on the range, forty-seven thousand versus about two thousand. So we did realign some payroll from the pro shop to the outside service area. And then administrative, just shy of a hundred thousand versus a hundred and fifty. So overall projected payroll, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand for FY twenty-three. Expense breakdowns, to kind of talk about that, I went through some of the high-level expenses, but course and grounds is three seventy-seven, carts is a thousand, range is nine seventy-five, pro shop expenses are being budgeted a hundred and five thousand, and I think it's important to note that the big number in the pro shop expenses is the revenue split between the third-party instructor. So as we have revenue coming in for, for clinics, we have expenses going out for that portion as well. And then marketing and administrative, which includes the water cost, which is eighty-five, I wanna say eighty-five thousand on water, because we're gonna have to pull in, we're gonna have to pull in and purchase water until the irrigation system is a hundred percent operational. And then marketing is seven thousand. So total expenses are six hundred and thirty, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, one ninety-four in operational expenses, and when you add in payroll, it's one point four million. How does that kind of roll down into what you've seen in the past? EBITDA, earnings before interest, interest, tax, depreciation, and amortization is a negative nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And then we add in the capital, three hundred and sixty-five thousand on the ground side. What that equates, we're proposing for this is three hundred and ten thousand in greenside bunker work. We're looking to outsource that greenside bunker work. It's a very detailed project on the greenside bunker. It requires, you know, specialists to, to move the heavy, to, to the sculpting and to really do the work on the greenside bunker project. And then fifty thousand dollars in capital, which was always in there for a piece of equipment, a sidewinder. The clubhouse capital, this was also in the original budget, was fifty thousand dollars, and that was for the seventeenth tee box, or the eighteenth tee, the two tee boxes and the fencing. And then the other capital number seventeen-five was furnace, drop sealing, and some electrical work, which was always in there as well. That boils down to a negative one point four-two versus a negative one point three-six is what I think you saw originally on that proposed budget. So a delta there of about sixty thousand. The biggest number being that grounds capital number of three eleven for the bunker work. We did price out the bunker work through, we've got two vendors right now that we priced it out on. The first quote came in at three hundred and eleven thousand, the second quote came in at seven hundred thousand. So, and we're waiting for a third quote from another vendor. I will say that the quote that came in from three hundred and eleven thousand is a vendor that's currently doing work out there, that's already staged out there, that's already has a machinery out there, that's very well involved in the project already out there at Winnetka Golf Club. So Dave, you wanna kind of just run through the importance of that bunker project and the greenside bunker, and why we're proposing it?
Yeah, I, I think the, the bunker renovation as a whole is not a simple project as maybe some can be, and, and, you know, I've done bunker renovations at, at Royal Melbourne, let's say, where we weren't really changing anything, it was just simply pulling sand, old sand out, maybe fixing some drainage if necessary, and putting new sand back in. With this project being that the bunkers really haven't, haven't been touched in a really long time, potentially thirty years, some of them are more, and with Mr. Jacobson's renderings and changes to some of them, it's, it's, there's way more involvement than a simple remove and replace. So that type of work is specialized, requires some skill that we feel is important, that you don't wanna skip out on, especially when you're, everything else is gonna be so great, we're gonna have, the, the fairway bunkers are gonna be brand new. Those won't be the, the existing fairway bunkers, the, the fairway bunkers are new construction, so those are gonna look brand new. So we want to make sure that at the end of the day, the finished product, all tied in together, it would be a shame if, if, basically you have a branded golf course and the greenside bunkers didn't match with everything else. That along with the timing of everything in the project, we have several different companies out there doing work, and if we're doing some in-house work and we're holding up something else, we don't wanna, trying to stay on schedule and on time with all the other vendors that are out there working is important, and having professionals do that, that know how to work hand in hand, maybe a little bit better than us doing it in-house is important also, is another big factor.
Yeah, and we've taken into consideration the labor difference and reduced the grounds side, the grounds team accordingly, to still complete the tree project that needs to be done, but also to understand that the bunker project is considered to be outsourced. So questions, comments?
Yeah, that's probably the one number that surprises me, and it might be even a ground and me question. So, you know, the way it's been engineered for water is, it's intended that our, the amount of time we have to buy water for the village is gonna be substantially reduced, because we're gonna be taking on so much water on the golf course, the ponds are gonna be leveled to one another, it's gonna feed back to the reservoir, to the golf course. So the assumption has been, and certainly told to us, that, you know, that's gonna drive that number away now. So I'm just kind of curious how you got to the eighty-two thousand. Is that from like, once grass seed is done and you're gonna be watering every day, and is the assumption of the eighty-two thousand that that means you are purchasing potable water, or are you gonna use what's there?
I think the, the numbers came from, I know we, Costa, we worked on this and utilizing past history and, and what numbers, what, what number of gallons were purchased in the past, but then also bearing in mind that we're not gonna start watering until seed hits the ground, which is sometime in late August, September, everything goes well. So at that point, we're obviously gonna be watering, but it's gonna be much heavier than a normal situation, because normally we, you know, you have an established turf grass plant that doesn't require as much water as when you're growing something in from seed. When you're growing new fairways, greens, and tees, if you're not getting any rain from up above, you constantly have to keep it wet. That's the only way it's gonna grow in. So sprinklers are gonna be running, a lot of times throughout the day, they're on cycles that, you know, a fairway may come on and run for ten minutes and shut off, and then an hour, two hours later, depending on relative humidity, the sprinklers come on again, you're watering again, because the, the, the more moisture you keep in the soil, the faster everything's gonna grow in. So, and not knowing exactly how quickly everything's gonna come online either with, with, with the, the storage tanks and, and the lake level, obviously the lake has to fill up, assuming it's gonna rain at some point and do that, but again, we don't know. So I think we were trying to come up with a number that made sense.
Yeah, and there's.
Costa might be able to speak to that.
Go ahead, Costa.
Uh, one other thing to consider is during construction, the ponds are offline. So we still have to maintain the driving range and other ancillary items there, plus the entire schooly play field comes out of that kitty, so that is all purchased potable water right off the bat. So during construction till August, we're buying water regardless, and then silt is gonna be a question that comes into play as those ponds fill back in, silt and drill bring those into our pump stations. We learned that problem back when we did construction many years ago, and we had issues with our pumping, so we want that silt to drop and be not suspended with water, and clogging up heads, clogging up irrigation system, just causing problems for us, so that's all taken into consideration.
I got you. Yeah, and I was gonna add some follow-up questions to that. So one of the follow-up questions is, on the eighty-two thousand, is that assuming the discounted rate that we now get from the village, or is that the old financial rate from the village?
Discounted rate.
That's a discounted rate.
That's a discounted rate, okay. And then the question in terms of timing, so when do we think the system would be available to be pumping? Is that, I guess, an aspect of it.
At, at some point, this, well, the system's gonna be back online, the irrigation system's gonna be done, but then how fast should ponds fill? There's natural groundwater, there's the veins put in, there's pump stations to help bring that back into the course, but we need it to fill up, and then if we don't have rain events and we're dry, we can just be bodying.
Yeah.
And I think you, you will see, I think we will, we will see a reduction in water costs once those, once the tanks are fully operational, once the pond is fully operational, and once everything is filled in. This is a matter of, you know, making sure the fields are watered, the range is water, et cetera.
Right, so we're helping out the fields from the golf course, like that. So, you know, we've, listen, the reason we're doing all this stormwater is because the place always floods and we get too much rain. So I wanna say our luck is gonna be that, okay, now we go into a drought, so a penalty we're gonna be there. My last question is from a current status perspective for the work that is being done out there, which by the way is awesome. How are they scheduled, why? Are they on schedule, have a schedule?
We had a meeting today, and I, I think they're, they're on schedule, they're, they're, they're gonna be wrapping things up. It sounds like next week, they talked about pulling out most of what's going on out there next week, because it's supposed to get, it's definitely slowed with the wet weather we had over the last couple of weeks, and they just weren't able to do a whole lot. I think most of the underground is where they want it to be, they're on schedule.
My last question, um, is from a current status perspective for the work that is being done out there, which by the way is awesome. How are they scheduled wise? Are they on schedule, out of schedule?
We had a meeting today and I, I think they're, they're on schedule. They're, they're, they're gonna be wrapping things up. It sounds like next week, they talked about pulling out most of what's going on out there next week because it's supposed to get, it, it's definitely slowed with the wet weather we had over the last couple of weeks and they just weren't able to do a whole lot. I think most of the underground is where they want it to be, they're on schedule there. Um, and what they're hoping to do is as winter goes along and, and they're, they need the ground to firm up a little bit, but they wanted to start cutting in some cart path uh, throughout the property and leave the excavating until the spring when it's not as wet and they're not doing more damage, you know, hopefully. But, uh, from what we saw today on their schedules that they provided us, they're right where they're, where they want to be.
Okay, great. Uh, do others have questions?
So I, I have a question. So, so regarding the bunkers, so there's an ask for an additional capital investment that's not in the one-seven, that's not in the operating losses, which I, I commend you for, for grabbing the guts to ask for more money on the first meeting. I just want to remind everybody on the board that every dollar that goes to the golf course is one dollar less that we have for Elder Centennial. And this is, this is, this is, uh, the, the, I don't know how many times it's gotten larger and larger. So, um, I just want you to be aware of that, that I think historically the golf courses said, hey, we need this. But now that we have a significant potential capital need at Elder Centennial, well, I think it's supposed to be from the board or BD like, well, I know you're asking this, but we can only give you X. I think we have to push a number, uh, to the golf business because this is gonna be, when you add it all up on operating losses, capitals, improvements, I don't know, it's gonna be four billion bucks back of the envelope. So I think the board just has to be aware of that.
I got it.
Yeah.
Myers, standing. Net, net, you went from one point three-six to one point four-two, so the delta's sixty thousand.
That's not included.
That's inclusive of, inclusive of the three fifteen, right?
The three fifteen's not.
The revenue, the revenue projections went up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And thus the delta's only sixty thousand.
Yep. I'm sorry, so that's what that, that.
Yeah, from one point three-six to one point four-two.
I apologize. I thought that was in addition to.
Okay.
And we, we investigated, uh, what we could do from a bunker renovation project to keep it at one point three-six. We had heavy discussion about liners. And at the end of the day, the decision was made to keep the liners in, I don't want to get into all the reasons as to why, but to keep the liners in the greenside bunkers. And, you know, had we, you know, taken liners out, we would've been at one point three-six. We kept them in, we need the liners, it's an integral part of the project. If you don't put the liners in, we risk collapsing on some bunker faces much earlier and, and, and really contamination of the bunkers. So we did, we did think about it, we did have heavy discussion about it.
So that, that's the three fifteen that's in the grounds capital?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
That's three, yeah, that's three fifteen of the three sixty-five.
Okay, okay. So you can crack a half of it, right?
We got eight, uh, we're right back where we were, which is great.
Other questions?
I have a call. One, will these numbers then be re-put back into Jim's format for the budget?
Yeah, let me, I, I can answer that.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I.
Really, you're trying.
I can answer it. So I brought, we have our budget book, it's probably a hundred pages deep, it's got all the accounts, it's got everything, line item by line item, expenses, on revenues, et cetera, et cetera. The short answer is yes.
Okay.
That's the short answer.
We will see that before we vote on the budget.
Yes.
That we can compare what we talked about before to what we're talking about now in a simple.
Yes.
Right, so I will get these numbers from them and build, build it into the twenty-twenty-three budget that we are going to present to you at, on the meeting on the twenty-sixth. And I will share that with all of you in advance so they have time to review it before.
Okay.
It will be mapped into your accounts.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on that at the board meeting on the bunker, the bunker renovation or?
Well, certainly, you know, Paul, give a strong call from board members now. I mean, it's not that, it's not that.
If we authorize this budget, inclusive of that, seems to me that that's a foregone conclusion.
Right, you're right, I would agree with that. Okay.
My other question, and I do not know the answer to some of this, so that's why I'm asking.
No, go.
But the women's golf club, I've heard in the last two meetings, all these great things we're doing for the men's club, and I just feel that it would be wrong to not ask that question.
Hundred percent agree, hundred percent agree. I reached out to, I can't remember.
I think it's Missy.
Missy Rabin.
I did reach out to the Women's Golf League and, and, and try to set up a, try to, try to open up a dialogue with them as well. I did do that.
Yeah, Cynthia, they're down to just sixteen liners right now.
Okay.
So they are trying to rebuild their organization.
Okay.
Still sixteen.
We're still sixteen, right. Oh, another question. So, um, the presentation by Rick Jacobson, is that still on for January eighteenth?
It is.
Because I haven't seen anything published.
It went out.
We posted them this week on both social media channels and sent an email as well.
I did not get it.
I got it.
I get it.
Okay, well, at least it's up there.
I'll double check.
We may have scrubbed Mickey from the database.
Five-thirty to six-thirty, January eighteenth here. I, I have one question. What is a sidewinder? Is it something you can use forever or is it construction specific?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's, it's a maintenance, a piece of maintenance equipment, it's a lawnmower, heavy-duty lawnmower that early, you're, you're mowing rough areas around banks, around green complexes. Uh, it's, it's, you know, let's say, what, a three?
It's a rough mower, it mows rough. It's, uh, it's just the aged, the equipment that is in existence currently, the, what, what's there, it needs replacement, it's time to, to, we're, the one that we're replacing is not worth fixing anymore.
Yes, and I was.
There's nothing to do with construction.
It was part of the original budget.
Right.
Does it have a different name?
It did.
Yeah.
Is that anything called a sidewinder?
Bankmore. Bankmore.
Different kinds of bowers.
Seventy-two or.
My second question is, were you able to harvest any of our equipment that we're not going to be using because we're gonna be down, out of operation? And either lease it out or like the carts or, um, rent it out to other courses that may need it?
So we, we had a, we had a meeting, I say we, Costa, myself, uh, Jeff Osborne, our VP of, of National Accounts, we had a meeting with, uh, one of the cart manufacturers to talk about, um, timing for new golf carts, to talk about correct golf cart values, and to talk about electrical requirements for the existing cart barn. Uh, I think we're fairly close to coming back with a recommendation, but we heard loud, you know, loud and clear that we don't want to get rid of these golf carts until we have a guarantee that the new, the new golf carts could be here, they could be housed, they could be in a cart barn, and we open the season in twenty-twenty-four with that fleet. So the, the short answer, the answers were close. Um, I, I feel really pretty good about hopefully being able to get something. Uh, and then as far as the grounds equipment's concerned, I, you know, if we rent out the grounds equipment we have, which is an option, but if we rent it out, then it's gonna be used by another golf course, it's gonna be used by another location, and it's going to be, uh, when it comes back to us, it's gonna have additional hours, it's gonna be, you know, that's not necessarily the right move.
And are your, is your supply of golf carts and transformers, has that used up at all? Or are you still in a situation where prices are not held and you're not sure when delivery is going to get?
Well, golf carts right now, we're still safe if, you know, if, we've talked about coming to a final conclusion and bringing it to the board in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three here. Uh, and we're safe from a golf cart standpoint if we make a decision in the first quarter to still have carts by the time we open in twenty-four. Transformers, I'm gonna leave that one to Costa.
So the current lead time is still where it was previously, but the good thing that we've learned through this is the elite chargers that would need to be purchased to support that fleet don't have the power draw that we had initially once thawed with the rapid chargers. The cycle time on the batteries of the lithium ions and what they could support and the amount of routes at the core of that the carts would go out and what we're expecting to have in our fleet, we can step our service down dramatically without needing to install the transformer, which is a huge cost savings, infrastructure-wise, and allows us to operate in a capacity that I think we're all pretty comfortable with in the future. We just need to reaffirm that because we already have four hundred, our amp service coming into the one facility at the clubhouse itself, being able to pare that down for what we need, that's what we're looking into now. But we should be able to bring over the, I think it was two hundred and twenty-eight amps max capacity, so we'll bring over two hundred amps of service for that and then leave the existing panel for the current infrastructure and be able to make that work. So, yeah, it should be a lot, a lot of, less of a cost the way it is fitted.
Awesome.
Less cost.
Less cost.
Could you send that, I, I didn't see, I may have missed it, the email about Rick Jacobson meeting, I didn't see it.
Yeah, we're planning to do another send as well and another push on social media too, so I'll double check to make sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is that just going to the golf list or is it going to the whole and up to community district?
That one was the golf club list that we sent it to.
So I wonder if maybe it should be going to the whole, like Kyle's list of, you know, like the boat launch lottery, open list, so that the entire community has some awareness.
Absolutely. And the food and beverage, we insert last time, that's our.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so just gonna stay on unfinished business, so couldn't you get the follow-up this up? You're up next.
All right, uh, update on the twenty-twenty-two budget. Before I do that, real quick, let's one video, one real quick. We found out this week, good news, Moody's ratings has raised our rating from double-A-one to what the highest rating is. That's good news.
Did you sign with you on?
Uh, they did, I can get into that and, uh, it's one of the.
Get your mother's heart, just curious.
No, that's good. Um, so.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you all heard, uh, the golf budget is going to be adjusted slightly. So when I get that from Vince and Matt, I will make those adjustments. And as I alluded to a few moments ago with you Cynthia, I will send out a revised, uh, presentation with the up-to-date numbers for you to review before the budget is presented to you for approval on the twenty-sixth. And I've been working very closely with David over the past several weeks to fine-tune things. I think we're at a point where we're comfortable with, with everything as it stands. Once the golf numbers are updated, I will send you their updated, uh, presentation early next week and I will reach out to you all for any questions or concerns you might have.
Quick question from me, Jim, I know who's on Co County, uh, under checks.
Okay, I was gonna touch on that later, but I can touch on that now too. Yes, uh, they have started, uh, making payments earlier than anticipated. We received the first payment, uh, last week of, I have it under my hand, seven hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. So roughly a third of what they owe us, uh, has already arrived.
That's a start, sorry.
And anticipating additional payments prior to the twenty-sixth, so I hope to be able to update those numbers for you at the next day on the twenty-sixth.
Fantastic. Okay. Just on that topic, do you anticipate we're gonna have three receipts?
I'm still anticipating three receipts for twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, that's, that's not necessarily the, that's not necessarily the same assumption other agencies have, just FYI. I mean, they're hopeful, seventy-five percent probably.
Uh, the way I'm looking at it, taxpayers were requiring the payments before December thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, um, so that twenty-twenty-one could be closed out.
Okay.
Agencies are submitting their levies in anticipation of receiving two payments this year. I don't think Co County wants to get into a situation where they're constantly six months in arrears.
Yeah.
Right, because that has an impact on, on everybody. And over a longer time, that's gonna affect everybody, no matter how well-positioned they are financially. I suspect we're gonna want to catch up as quickly as possible, especially in an election year, so.
Jim, anything else or any more questions of Jim?
Well, I've got a couple more points. I'm gonna, Costa's wrapping up now. We were fortunate enough to receive the funds from the sale of Library Park, uh, December thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, which is built into the twenty-twenty-three budget. So our revenues are up, we'll get started in January twenty-twenty-three.
So thank you for the Library Park update and Adam Simon, thank you for your teamwork on that. It was great teamwork as well as Commissioner Seaman and Commissioner Cotto. So I also want to highlight Jim's efforts to communicate with the Kelly Cost of Chapman Cutler and Moody's and to stay on top of the game. Christina, you and Eric Lessin are, Commissioner Lessin were active in our alternate revenue bond process when we last really had formal interaction with Moody's. And that was the double-A-one rating I never received. And so through twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, the financial performance of the agency justifies a triple-A rating. I think it's, and you've been in touch with Moody's, so, uh, thank you for your work to get that done. So really, it's been easy.
Okay. Anything else, sir? Any other questions of Jim? All right, um, Costa, update on the selection of coastal engineer for Elder Lane and Centennial Beach project?
Thank you, thank you. Um, so the process is still underway. Uh, currently, uh, as of this week, um, the park district interview team was sent to sit down with all three candidates who did apply. We are, are grateful enough to have three candidates come together and, uh, submit proposals that met the requirements for the standards. After review, all three candidates, uh, we were able to bring them in for interviews and those were conducted this week. So Tuesday, we interviewed in the morning one firm and then yesterday we finished up the other two. We then had an opportunity to deliberate on that information this morning and circle back with the best information that we could in short order. So we are still going through and, uh, completing reference checks. Uh, I had a call with one of the commissioners from Boss Park, uh, this afternoon, uh, around five o'clock just about, about this as well, so they're still, uh, floating in. But we will finish up reviewing those, uh, resume, or excuse me, those, um, references, um, through the process. What we did note through the process and as we completed with the ninety-minute interviews, um, which were, were fantastic, um, we came up with three different firms. Baird and Associates, LTD was one of the firms that applied, JZA Geo-Environmental and Company was the second, and then Red, Red Barn Design and Engineering SC was the third. Both Baird and, or JZA are in-house firms and pretty much do all the work within their team. We know Baird with their previous experience with the Lakefront Master Plan, helping foster that plan from the conceptual point all the way through the adoption of that plan in twenty-sixteen. JZA had a small but brief, or one member of their team had a small, brief, uh, interaction with the park district, Dan Riati, uh, had the initial kickoff to the master plan, but then had moved firms, uh, thus far and is working for JZA. After review of Dan Riati and his team and their view, um, we had a better understanding of what their team, uh, can bring to the table. And lastly, uh, right, or Red Barn was the last one, uh, who did submit. Now, Red Barn is a smaller firm out of Wisconsin, uh, that we've actually had the experience to work with them previously as well on the Lloyd project. Red Barn did submit with a second subcontractor to work with them, and that was Shabekan Associates. So Red Barn did come in with a pairing of their design firm and their abilities along with Shabekan Associates, Charlie Stephanie and their team. Through the review, we took the questions or the criteria, the grading criteria, um, that was listed in the RFQ, there were seven questions, uh, rated in there on point space. And I'd like to thank, um, Commissioner Rapp for some of the help through that process when we were finalizing the review, excuse me, the RFQ initially. Went through, everybody had the opportunity to sit down, interview with the team, uh, we had seven people on the panel for the interview team. We had John Peterson, Kyle Berg, James Crocker, Anya Kramer, Greg Field, who is my operations manager, and Andrew Kabur, who is another one of my parks full-time members, and myself sitting on the interview process. We didn't talk, discuss anything until all the interviews were completed and we had, everybody had a chance to kind of go back and find out what they saw with the presentations and put their grades or their rate or their points down for the rating system. Then today, we took some time, set aside and reviewed that information this morning. After talking through the presentations, um, which some did better than others unfortunately, uh, but going through the presentations, looking at the firm's history, looking at the project history, understanding the capability of their, their firm's internal and external capabilities, what they can do in-house versus what they would have to contract out, uh, site, you know, location to the, to the agency, um, you know. you know, location to the, to the agency, you know, the ability to respond, past project work and everything else. We did come up with a selection based on the average numbers of all seven parties. Those numbers are listed in the bottom of the memo. WF Baird and Associates averaged at eighty-three point two eight, or JZA came in at, I'm sorry, did I say eighty-three or eighty-two?
Eighty-three, you're good.
I'm sorry. Anyway, JZA came in at eighty-two point four three and then Red Barn came in at eighty-eight point one four. Through the three firms, it was identified that Red Barn, once again, with everybody taking a look independent of one another and writing their reviews down previous, they came in at the highest rating. Where we, where we understood and kind of reviewed a little bit more in greater detail, because I know there was a quest for a certified coastal engineer out in the state of Illinois, the state of Illinois does not actually have or recognize coastal engineering. Coastal engineering is performed under the PE of civil engineers. That was something that we asked all candidates and we got a great explanation through all three firms on that note. So to meet the criteria, Kalina, as you had requested previously, to make sure that we identified that, we then went to look at the work history and the product history that they perform in the field to help better our judgment on the capabilities of that firm and what they can do. Once again, looking back to the previous projects, some of the larger firms have a greater reach, they have more of a global reach, but they also have less projects completed as it relates to local in the, in the North Shore area, Great Lakes, they do have a higher or a heavier hand, but they also have a lot more projects that were in studies or design phase and never actually made full iterations to completed projects. Once again, going through the review, it was identified through the team for Red Barn and Design and Engineering SC at eighty-eight point one four. Thus, as we follow the RFQ, our next steps in the process is to move into negotiations. We are still having or completing the, the reference checks on that, but as we work through that, I wanna make sure that we bring this matter back to the Park Board and give us direction, as is stated in the RFQ, to give us authority to move into negotiation stages with that next firm. The negotiations base, or will rank us to find the contractor and conduct services for a fair and reasonable compensation, taking into consideration the, the project budget, what we have in a budget currently, that's an estimated value, scope, complexity and nature of the services to be rendered. That will be our criteria as we move into negotiations to work up the cost that we would expect that firm to come in based on the product through the three phases of work identified in RFQ. From there, we would kind of work backwards, come up or come in with another, a formal represent, or excuse me, a formal proposal, if you, from that design firm and then bring that back to the Park Board with a recommendation if we can find, come to terms with the first firm. If for whatever reason, we can't come to terms, we think it's beyond our scope or our budget and our means of what we think that is appropriate for the work, it gives us the ability then to go to the next name on the list. If we go through the grading system, it would be Baird and Associates at eighty-three point two eight points, now that was based out of a hundred by the way, to continue on with negotiations. Our goal is to try to get this wrapped up to a point where we can have that done and voted on at the 26th meeting. Now, as I've mentioned before and it's noted in the RFQ and we talked through all the interviews, we would have whichever design firm is the front runner, so at this point, it would be Red Barn and Shabeka and Associates as identified, the board would support that for us to move forward, they will be in attendance on the 21st to interact at the workshop. And that was put in place as part of the base criteria, so whichever firm that we decide to go with, that is the same, the same task that would be performed by that firm. So just be aware that's something that's already baked in, so we can make sure we have representation available for that coastal component in which we can talk to the committee. At this time, I'd like to open back up to the commissioners if there's any questions as it relates to the process or the RFQ.
So very quick question to me, Costa. So if we engage Baird and for the workshop and they don't end up with the project, are they gonna charge us for that workshop?
It's part of the process and all the project materials, there's no charge to it for the RFQ, so the answer, we sure do.
Okay, questions of Costa? Sit down, Kalina.
Hi. Do I understand that Red Barn is a solo and his name is Matthew Wright?
Correct.
And his, his, he has, he is a licensed civil engineer, is that correct?
He is a licensed civil engineer and he has, or part of his design firm and with the work that he does in not only civil engineering, but also coastal engineering, water development on other projects could be related as well.
Right, I just ran him on LinkedIn and I really like the guy because anywhere in the words of Stetson and has his tag in here is someone that I'm gonna like his personality. I may not have, have expressed myself very well as a lawyer in as far as technical capability, but you know, when I was talking about how the coastal engineer, it was my hope we were getting a, a group like Baird that come in and, and, and they have the certification, whether it is through NOAA, whether it is, there's an academy of ports, harbors, whatever, engineers. In other words, where, where we have a group that, that has the software to do the modeling, perhaps Mr. Wright does. I'm really confused that he has a Shabeka and Associates as subcontractor and the reason for my confusion is I thought that we had determined as a board, help me out here, that Shabeka and Associates as well as Lakota were part of our, already our consulting group. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be very direct with you, I'm somewhat disappointed because I was hopeful we were gonna bring in some fresh eyes, who would bring in some new ideas, who might make this project even better.
Sure.
So again, I'm real confused as to why we have Mr. Wright subcontracting Shabeka. To my knowledge, they have no coastal, true coastal engineering certification. Am I correct on that?
They have, so Charlie Shabeka has different certifications throughout.
Who's the geologist?
He is, he is a licensed geologist and a licensed geologist does meet requirements for IDR to be able to submit permits. But in this case, that's not gonna be the case, or in this, in this scenario, the certifications would be and all the standard lines would be through Mass Office, through Red Barn and spread it through him. So he would be the peer review to any work that is performed from Shabeka and Associates. I understand where you're coming from and I understand, you know, your thought process. Once again, this is not bias. This is based on the information that was presented. Like I said, some people presented better than others and the information that was brought for us and looking at the design firms, understanding their capabilities, understanding where they're located, to be able to respond, understanding their depth on their projects, looking back at what they've performed to date and where we're at with our project. Once again, seven independent individuals came up with a tally and based on that tally, that was the, the average score was eighty-eight compared to eighty-three and eighty-two.
And again, please understand that I'm not inferring at all that there's bias.
Sure.
My concern is that I thought we already had Shabeka on board for this, that we have to enter into a contract and we already have Lakota on board for this. So it is my misunderstanding that I thought we were looking at, at a group that would come in, who would bring in that coastal acumen. I didn't realize that, that part of the RFQ, you were looking at, at construction projects they had done. I, I thought we were actually trying to bring someone in who would do just the engineering process.
Right, but you also wanna make sure that you understand the competency on that engineering and how it's been put into practice in real world. So that's where the actual real world process come in. When we looked through the proposals and I have those electronically, I'm gonna quite not share with the board, but like I said, we literally wrapped this up this morning, so you're getting this pretty much in real time. Understand where you're coming from. I will suggest that we are currently not under contract with Shabeka and Associates. Their contract ran out. We have not re-engaged them for a new contract because they did put in part of the RFQ and there were questions asked and we circled back with counsel to make sure that they would be qualified to be able to do that. And we, it was heard from them, they need the criteria based, based on the state statute for them to apply. Once they checked that box, then we went ahead, we reviewed the proposals, all the criteria was there, then we moved in and we allowed all three firms to come in for interviews so we can understand all the capabilities for every firm. And once again, seven different opinions came in, some were higher than others for, you know, for certain things, but overall averages, that's where we came in. It's not my determination, that's a staff recommendation. Ultimately, this decision is in the hands of the board to decide.
Costa, I care most about your ranking.
Sure.
So of the three that we have here, who would you recommend? You are being incredibly team oriented, which you always are. Lots, lots of people look, but what was your ranking?
So my ranking, for, for what it's worth, now that this is all done, we're complete, my ranking does follow the actual ranking, so it was, Red Barn was number one, Baird was two, and JZA was a very close third.
So I just wanted to, since I have the motion here, I mean, the motion that we passed was to authorize Costa to secure design proposals for Elder and Centennial from the Lakota Group, Shabeka and Associates, and to move forward with a request for proposals for a third-party coastal engineer for consideration and vote. So just so that we have that clear from the October seventh, or October twenty-seventh motions for the record. I just would say that for a project of our scope, I'm curious to just understand like how much weight was given to the Shabeka subcontracting versus the Red Barn in line with the motion? Because I, I mean, we can argue about what the total cost of the project's gonna be, we don't know, but it's, you know, on the order of ten million, twelve million, fifteen million, I mean, it's a big project. So for a solo, a sole proprietor, I mean, like are they insured for that kind of project or is that something that then will be covered in the contracting phase?
So, so Matt currently has done projects with Kenosha upwards of thirty million dollars. And so in, in order of magnitude out of his firm, he's done eight, or eight thousand liter feet of shoreline in Kenosha for over thirty million dollars worth of work. He has the limitation, or the capabilities and he has licensee in Illinois to perform that services. That was part of the request for the RFQ is to provide those numbers so they can be rest checked and make sure that they are solidified, otherwise it would be void for us to move forward with that. So we confirmed the capability and scope of these firms. Like I said, for them to meet the interview criteria, we vetted that out and we didn't want to say discard one or the other based on my sole opinion, it was let's bring them all in and have three shops in it, have three different opinions, three different proposals to find the best capable for, for our project. Now, I will suggest that the reason that we haven't moved forward with the proposals for Lakota and for the Shabeka and Associates is when Shabeka and Associates, as part of the pre-bid for this, was suggested that they were gonna bid on this as a subcontractor to Matt Wright at Red Barn, why would we double up our services if it's not needed? So we held back on that so we can get through this process and then continue to move forward. So it's been suggested to us that we might not necessarily need two parties, two firms that do coastal work. We can have one firm that's all encompassing and go that way and not necessarily have the second. If the board has the appetite to take that on, to have Shabeka as our in-house that we've used tried and true and then bring in a third party, we can go that way as well. The, our smittle through Matt Wright at Red Barn does that, there's not a duplication of services and it probably would, you know, I'm, you know, suggesting that it would come at a lower cost, I don't know that to be true because we haven't got to that phase, but I would suggest that if we pay Shabeka their services and we bring in a third party, one of these other firms, either Baird or JZA to bring that other third party in, we're gonna be duplicating a lot of those efforts and costs. So that's something just to be aware of, not necessarily drive the fact, but be aware of.
Listen, I'm supportive of, I'm supportive of staff on this.
Sure.
Done a lot of work. I'm supportive of staff, I guess. Christina?
I too am supportive of staff. I have two questions. What was the biggest differentiator between Red Barn and the others? And the second is just a process. You sent out this RFQ and you only got back these three replies, and this was a broadly advertised RFQ. You got back these three replies, you ranked them, you analyzed them and you weighted probably the pertinence of their projects. So what was the biggest difference between?
So I won't be able to speak for the other six parties, of course. I have, I have all their notes because I, you know, I put all the, added up all the totals. For me, what broke down is vacation is one, being able to respond in real time, the ability to work in the Winaka shoreline or understand the dynamic of what the Winaka shoreline is and the surrounding communities in our like environment and other parts for me, it's our expertise and experience. The other firms have some in the area, they have one or two projects along the Winaka coastline and then from there, they move further out. Both the other firms had worked previously for the Rosewood Park project and we know that there was some mistakes made to that project, that unfortunately, there was some nourishment needed through that. After getting a rather lengthy discussion and going down in, little pun intended because I know Jim used it earlier to the granular level, but Dan Verati did a really nice job explaining the, literally the sand content and the size matter of the sand content and how that reflects and works with the environment to understand a better dynamic. Once again, very well prepared, understood, but when you break this down more and more, it was, it wasn't the whole, the whole piece, it was pieces and pieces and pieces. And computer software does what it does, that's one component, that's a model and that's, they all share similar models, you know? So that's not a component, that's a big driver for me, that's something that can be contracted out by a third party, by Baird or JZA if needed, or as, as, you know, to what level we go with stormwater and looking through that, you know, through Berg or in their level of modeling. So for me, it was real world time on what they know of the North Shore shoreline, how that shoreline works in this environment. That was probably the biggest driver for me personally, but I can't speak for the other six people.
And then a licensed coastal engineer in Illinois is basically a civil engineer?
A licensed civil engineer, yes. They all reaffirmed that, made sure we asked that.
No, I mean, because that's, that's brand new information. So thank you. Thank you very much. And I know you did hustle over the holidays and I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah.
You all did.
I wanna thank you for, for throwing this together so fast.
Sure.
Because, you know, again, and, and also taking vacation. Way to go. But I'll come back a bit. Do I understand that Baird works for Landco right now?
As far as I'm aware, that Baird is not contracted with Landco.
So I thought they were. And, and I, and it's my understanding that JZA works for Calworth right now.
They are working on a master plan for Calworth.
Yeah, that's what I understood. And, and again, you know, this, this idea that any civil engineer is also a coastal engineer, again, I'm a neophyte on this. But, but, but where I would head is I would think that people that have a masters in coastal engineering or those with PhD in coastal engineering, whether it actually have their civil and then they have upper graduate degrees, that that would be pretty persuasive if you're looking at someone not to do the construction work. This is actually going in and doing the coastal design work. That was not persuasive for you?
It was, but then when you think about Charlie Shabeka who taught coastal engineering for thirty-five years.
Again, Charlie is a geologist.
I understand, but.
So we don't make this back and forth.
Well, if I may, just one other comment. Is, is Mr., is, is Charlie Shabeka actively involved in Shabeka and Associates today? Is he there on a regular basis?
Yes, and he is the principal for Shabeka and Associates who is gonna be working on from their team on this project and Stephanie, the two identified in the RFQ.
So next steps, obviously, you're gonna summarize all this stuff and come to us with a recommendation for approval on the board meeting, next board meeting?
So as long as the board will grant me the authority to move into contract negotiations with that firm, I just need confirmation that the board is comfortable with me proceeding with Red Barn to move into contract negotiations and then if that is not the case, I just need just, you know, which direction to go.
Okay. Well, again, this is a straw poll because it's a committee of random board meeting. I would certainly be in favor of you proceeding with anyone not in favor of that. So we can continue to get more information every time. Sounds like you are good too, keep knowing, Costa.
Okay.
But just for complete clarity, my expectation is that the board would see the entire contract before we decide to go with the vendor. before we decide to go with the other.
All materials will be shared with you.
Okay. No, I just, I'm looking at the past, I've seen, like, sometimes we've had the contracts come before the board, and sometimes we haven't. And I just want to make sure that it's clear that, like, as a commissioner, I expect to see the contract before we decide it.
To clarify that question, if it was any of the other two firms, the contract would basically be the same, correct?
It would be the same, there, there might be ancillary things that are in there, but once again, we're going to drill down internally, we're going to lean our expertise that we have from legal to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. And then, as we've done previously, and you're correct, Cynthia, not always, it depends on the scale and scope, but something of this magnitude, definitely, we'd let the board review it and take a look at that.
You've also covered in prior board meetings, you were very, as.
You know?
Right, let's make sure you have a chance to review it. And to answer your question on insurance, on it.
Okay. No, it's just that, for example, in the Shabika contract, previously, there was something unusual for the insurance, and so, it's good to be explicit about it.
The GC on this will be Red Barn. They're going to be the, the main consultant. Shabikan Associates, the way it's set up, is a sub-consultant of them, so our path through would be through Matt and his, you know, and his firm, and then it would go to Shabika as needed, as a supplement where needed.
But Costa, do I understand Red Barn is Matt?
Red Barn is Matt.
Does he have staff?
He does not have staff, he contracts out what he needs to, as he needs to.
Okay, so we're talking about solo.
Talking about Matt Wright, correct.
And other than Kenosha, what other areas does he work?
He has done quite a bit of work throughout. He's done work in Willmet, Willmet Harbor, he's done additional work at, at different sites throughout the community here. I apologize.
Well, I know he has a track record with Shabika, did he not help on Lloyd?
He did, partially.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, he was a sub, as I recall.
That's true. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Costa. All right, so move on to 6.4, Elder Lane plus Centennial Beach Workshop, open house, details and discussion. Warren, if you would take that away, please. I'm going to prefer the Costa to it. Okay?
Uh, thank you, Mickey.
You need a break, Costa? You got some water? You got some, you got some?
Good.
Busy man.
Um, you might notice a little bit more gray in the light here.
Christmas present.
Yeah. Um, so, yes, we are continuing on with our efforts to prepare for the 21st workshop. We are excited with, you know, what this workshop is going to be able to give back to the community. Um, you guys, the board has had an opportunity to review, an initial review of the boards in regards to an outline, not the boards themselves, but understanding our presentation, how we're moving forward. The design hasn't changed as far as our layout. We are still looking to proceed with six different stations, including history, Station One, history, projects to date, and background information. Station Two would be our timeline to date, where we've gone and where we're at to date. Current design, Station Three would be current designs to plan, plans to date, as well as motions that helped drive those plans, to give some history to some of the people that might not be as well informed, or participated as much as some people have, or some of the community has. And then from there, we're going to move into our design examples. And the design examples is probably where the majority of the, you know, the audience is probably gravitate towards, understanding where we're at, the principles, the founding principles that got us there, but also the conceptual plans around the dog park and what we've done thus far, understanding access and the ability to traverse the dog park in a, or in a right-of-way, if you will, to allow people to traverse the lake, and also other components of that. Looking at small, medium, and large level plans for accessibility was one that we've identified and are driving down to further, understanding the combined plans of Elder and Centennial, and how those work, the laboratory together, with and without the exchange, understanding the comparisons to Lloyd, understanding the designs for Elder, understanding the height limitations that we've put in thus far, the motion that was approved for the Elder two-way stone light plan, and driving down that stone and trying to make sure that we are keeping the views and this as available. We're working with the Lakota team currently, as was approved for the not to exceed $15,000. We're moving through that. In addition to that, we have, or we are working with Christopher Burke and his team, he is putting together some illustrations around the stormwater outfalls so we can be better educated and be able to explain that a little bit more clearly to our participants on the 21st, as well as having those members of those teams available for open discussion along with the coastal engineers. At this time, it would be Matt Wright and his team available for the meeting as well. We have secured the facility at the community house, we have definitely more than enough room to lay this out. And then, the last piece of this, or the, the two last pieces, is moving on to Station Five, talking about the dog park itself, and the motions that were approved on the 27th, and the design elements of what that involves. Taking a look at the parameters of the beach, trying to figure out, where do we land on the size for the beach? Is it 170, is it 270? How does that fit in? I know there's ongoing discussion for that, and that's where we're going to want to lean in more on our coastal team to help support that, and understand how that's going to work with, without, and all the other data information that they're going to bring with for that. We'll have auxiliary boards that show design materials, so people can have a better understanding of what that is. We'll try to find materials or photographs that are rendered, that show these in real-world applications, so people can get a better understanding and see physically what that will look like. But sometimes it's hard to visualize from a plan view, okay, what does that actually mean? So, we're going to try to do our best to really describe and show that to the community so they can better understand it. And once again, these are all conceptual designs in draft form, but we're going to try to work toward the plan that we can implement here soon. And then lastly, Station Six is going to be the property exchange. Currently, where we're at, showing the timeline and the history of that, the acquisition of what it was shown in the master plan originally, and then also include a board to show what had the most IDNR for 205 Shippensburg Road as prepared by ADA com. So, that's going to take you through the stations and the boards. And then, we talked about community, community engagement, excuse me, and how the best, what's the best way that we can work with the community to make sure.
Before you, before you go on to that.
Yes.
Did I miss the ADA consultant? Did you reference that?
I, I did not, I apologize. That was, that's one of that John's working with.
So, we'll have Craig Culp and John McGovern there as well. So, John is a subject matter expert on, if you're available, recreational facilities for user vulnerability, and he has a capability to assist us on the 21st. We are not contracted with him in a formal sense, there are other firms we're going to consider for the project on a local basis, but he has worked hand-in-hand with Craig Culp. If you think about the complexity of Centennial, it is complex, without question, but the greatest complexity where John has contributed is with the MSSA building, which was a retrofit of a synagogue up on Lake Cook Road. And if you think about what was required of John McGovern to get that done, with the challenges associated with all the patrons that are using the NSS, NSSR facility, feel pretty good about what he's going to be able to do on that.
Great answer. One, will we have cable?
Yes.
For them to address those issues?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Wanted to talk.
Yeah. You want to clear your throat? Anything else, Costa?
Yeah, so, that takes us to the sta, the stations. We're, we're still working on the layout as far as the timing, because we are going to have the workshop, it's going to start at 10:00 AM and run until about 1:00 PM. So, I mean, three hours seems like a, you know, an abundance of time, but it's, it's really not, it's going to go pretty fast. You'd be surprised how fast these open houses go when you start engaging with the public, and there's questions, you know, being answered and asked, and moving things around. But, the one thing that, you know, was, was pressed upon at the December 15th meeting was community engagement. How are we going to get the community engaged on this? And what are the tactics, or what are the, you know, the opportunities in front of us to really gain information from this, instead of, as always, just being an education center? Well, let's give them some information back. So, looking at that, talking through that, we are still working on that component, and we, as of tomorrow, we have another meeting in the morning. Long story short, we're going to have comment cards, the usual, if you have opportunities for people to come in, they'll get, you know, a certain number of posted notes, where they can write comments and post those on the, you know, specific topics that they want to get more information, but that's, that's all fine and good. We're trying to figure out the next best way. So, what we thought about doing is creating small user groups, or smaller groups of, you know, patrons as they come in, people that are engaged, and break that out to however many we need to, but maybe like groups of six or eight, where we then break away into a workshop setting, where those groups can then sit at a table with, whether it's a board member, whether it's a staff member, with a topic. That topic would basically look like, we'd talk to, you know, what are your elder, you know, your top two likes of elder, what are your top two dislikes of elder, what are your top two likes of Centennial, what are your top two dislikes of Centennial? And then, what are your top two, what would I change for the project? And the reason that we want to sit down in the groups, because it can be a more collaborative number for those people to sit there and discuss the project matter, understand what other people are thinking, and maybe, you know, gain some insider perspective from a different point of view, and allow the group kind of in a natural, organic setting, create this, you know, create some more creativity, to give back suggestions that will then be reported back to staff, and we can formulate that and put that on a website. Now, I know there's our efforts for, on a, on a different level, you know, John, I'm not sure if you want to talk through the, like, public relations piece a little bit, and the engagement there, but staff is looking to best engage the public and make sure that we're trying to get the most information out of this meeting as we can. If there's other suggestions that you've had, that have, had some time now, almost a month to think about, and you want to, you definitely float our way, always willing to hear, you know, opportu, different opportunities.
So, Grace has been fantastic in helping to build this out, and has collaboratively worked on a mail, you want to talk at least a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, hitting the, your mailboxes Friday through Sunday, whenever that will arrive, it's just a postcard describing the open house workshop, and just kind of what it all entails, and encouraging the community to come out and share their input and give feedback so that they can have a say in this big project. So, that's coming out, as well as, there will be, you know, an email push, possibly a few, then to, again, encourage people to come out, and then continue with newsletters about this project, as well as social media updates, different things like that. That's kind of all coming within the near future, tomorrow, Saturday, that's kind of what the outlook is.
And we have a website that you, a way for people to send in emails already to talk about a topic of interest for the, for the individuals, so we're adjusting that, the topics that you can comment on, so that if somebody is at home and they want to talk about the experience that they had at the open house, you know, we want to encourage them to use our website, and we'll aggregate those, the information that comes in as another way to just constantly drive information for consideration.
And you can specifically choose, if, you know, when you choose to contact us through our, you know, kind of email submission form, there is a little facet that you can choose specifically to make a comment about the Elder Lane and Centennial project, so it's a little bit more clear-cut, it's going directly to those people who need to be involved with that.
My suggestion, one, if I, if you want me to be there earlier than 10, I'll, if you need me there at 8 o'clock, if I can help set up, I'd be more than happy to do that. Yeah, let me, can I, supplement some additional information?
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you. So, the motion that was made on October 27th is for a special meeting, and staff actually came back and said, hey, we have a difficulty creating a special meeting, which is a formal board meeting, no way to video, no way to capture minutes, and because we're having these disparate groups, came back and said, we recommend that we make it a workshop, open house. And I listened to all this, and upon the advice of counsel, was satisfied that that was a more appropriate format to capture the dialogue. That means that we will have participation from board members, and first of all, is, is anyone not going to be available? So, everybody's going to be there, awesome. And that we would.
Eric has expressed.
Eric said he might be tied up with his kids.
Yeah, so, so, I think there, you guys have some ideas on splitting us up so that we can man different tables, but we should be careful not to deliberate, that we will collect information, we will have these exchanges, but we will save our deliberations for the 26th, once we've aggregated all the input from people that are commenting online, and obviously, staff will have a lot to do after the fact. So, Costa, do you want to speak to the tables and your thoughts for that?
Sure, sure. So, just real quick, you know, with the 26th and the, you know, that literally, the workshop happened on the 21st, we had talked about leaving the communication open for respondents to come back a week following that as well. So, to come back and deliberate with a lot of that information that's obtained from that meeting, meeting requirements, to get that to the board by Tuesday, I'm not sure how well we can accomplish that. So, I just want to set a real expectation on how fast we can move with that information. So, just be aware, we'll do our best, but it might not all be aggregated by the, you know, the deadline to get it in for the 26th meeting, so just be aware, but we'll do our best to do that. As it relates to the tables and groups, you know, we're trying to pair people up where they're best suited, so who better to work around the dog park than the two people that co-chaired the dog park committee? You know?
Not at all interested in doing that.
I'm sorry?
Not at all interested in, in doing that. So, no.
Okay.
I think I would like to see our, our president, because you're the one who's really been focused, and you know what you want as far as your fencing, and I would think you would be terrific in explaining to the community the dog park piece. I really do. Because it was your genius to bring this back. Come on, take credit for it.
I, I understand what it is, I'll be happy to do it. So, I, I will suggest, in Station Four.
I want to let Costa lay out all his recommendations. These are his recommendations.
In, in Station Four, there is probably the most information as it relates to the design for the dog park and the components that are of the dog park, not necessarily the form and function of what it is, or what we're trying to accomplish. So, part of the boards, like I said, for Station Four, are included there, so I figured our design consultants that we're bringing back, and Warren and myself, are probably going to be best suited in that area to explain those, those items, because that's where the most discussion, or discussion is probably going to happen. But like I said, looking back to where we've done, and who's been at committees to help push, or to help create that progress, is where we looked. Other efforts, you know, taking a look at, excuse me, sorry, because, I'll wait for a second. Taking a look at Station One, Station Two, looking at the history and the timeline, you know, trying to identify the best people for that, between park district staff, I figure we'll tackle that, and then current plans and designs and motions. Cynthia, if you would be kind enough, I figure with the motions and where we're at with current plans and design, I know you have a great eye, and a lot of that information kind of up, if you will, you have a great memory for that, so I was thinking of having you by Station Three. And then, when we go to Station Six, with the, with the property exchange, Christina being in, I was kind of looking to you guys to help there a little bit.
Is there a place where you would prefer me?
I'd like to be with Cynthia, if that's okay.
Yeah, I.
This is probably wherever you want to.
Sure, I don't care. I appreciate it.
Here's the other thing, I don't want to be in the same place for three hours.
No. I was thinking, like, you want to circulate through the stage, and I mean, it's also a learning opportunity for us, and that's what I was thinking.
So, the, there is going to be time for this, so it's not going to be three hours straight. So, we're going to start off with probably the first 45 minutes, you know, you figure 15 minutes or so for introductions, people start, you know, getting on site, and then the first 45 minutes to an hour, we would have people at station. Then we'd do a break, we would get to the tables and have people be engaged, and then circle back from there, read the, have the, you know, out of that group, we would assign somebody to be the speaker, if you will, out of the group of six, talk through the two highlights for the top likes and dislikes for Elder, top likes and dislikes for Centennial, and then the two other ideas that they'd like to see changed. Have that read out loud to whoever in attendance, and then from there, break it back out where it's just an organic flow through the entire, you know, the entire area. So, the last hour, if you would, would just be an open forum for commissioners to intervene or wherever, have public intervene or wherever, and have staff kind of attend stations, and consultants attend stations as needed to help answer questions along the way. Now, that's, once again, I don't do this for a living, I'm getting support from the Lakota team, they're doing a great job, we're trying to pull this together, but if there's suggestions that the board would like to make, and the, and the board agrees upon those, we're open. We're, we're just trying to make sure we get the best opportunity to community to be heard and interviewed.
I would strongly suggest we quantify, quantifiable feedback rather than qualitative feedback. Qualitative feedback is almost impossible. Working on the caucus and looking at all the comments.
I love this, I love this.
How do I, how do you, other than reading for everyone and looking for a key word
How do you, other than reading for everyone and looking for a keyword search, then you pull it up? So, and we all hear different things.
Yeah.
Some of us don't listen at all. I don't, I'm great at it. So, being serious, if there's OJ, if there's a format, I know we have this other marketing individual engaged, if there's a way to like, scale of 1 to 5, 1 stinks, 5's great, where are you? Because otherwise, we're just going to get all this disparate qualitative feedback that we're going, sorry. Christina?
I want to tag on to what you just said, because I think it's important that citizens, one of our biggest challenges has been, we get all this feedback, some positive, some negative, the people on one side don't necessarily see the feedback from the other. So I would like all the feedback that we get to be preserved, screenshot, visible, in whatever way we can do it, so that one side can see the other side in some fashion. If you, if there are comment cards and you're willing to sign your name, then scan in all the comment cards and people, if they agree, they can see how many people are for this, how many people are against this, because that seems to be a real struggle. And we have a good sense, because in our minds, we're aggregating it, we're taking notes when everyone speaks, we're also, we do all these emails, but I think for each of the participants, they don't necessarily see the other side or the population of the other side. So that would be my first one. My second one, I'll go anywhere you tell me to, and I can, I am available from the 21st to the 26th to come in and photocopy, staple and whiteout. Absolutely, I'd be happy to be...
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
I'm a Texas...
No, that's, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Not for you, I mean, I would be willing to do it as well, during the school day.
There's a way for people at a station, maybe perhaps to type it in, if there's an iPad there, if there's a computer there to type in your comment, then put a number, 1 to 5 or whatever.
Yeah, well, QR code.
Also good, also good.
But we don't, there's no interpretation, because we're all, we have some biases, right?
Yeah.
So sometimes we just don't...
No translation, I think it's really important, I agree.
You can tape recorder, you can tape recorder, then take your notes afterwards.
So what if we have a table upon exit, we have two boards or, you know, whatever data we're looking for, and that's where they can, there's a tally mark.
Yeah.
So say, okay, now that you've been engaged, you've read all the information, you've heard, you've had a chance to speak to these people, these individuals that have helped drive the plans, understand the coastal components, understand the stormwater components, you know, maybe we come up with two or three or four or whatever, says, okay, what do you like, you know, do you like, you know, are you for Elder 2A, are you for a change of Elder 2A, you know, or, I don't know, I'm just, I'm kind of, this is off the cuff, as I can tell.
Yeah.
But I'm just thinking, out loud a little bit, just trying to have some dialogue here to try to better get that grounded, and make sure I got a better consensus of a board is actually asking for it, it's entirely. So I'm just...
Yeah, go ahead, Warren. So there are some specific things that I would hope we'd come out of this workshop session with. It's not that this is a one and done, this may take a couple of sessions, but there are some, there's a goal, there's a desire to continue to build upon our prior decisions and narrow the focus. We were coming into this knowing that we identified that the dog beach should be at the south end, it should be no less than 170, no more than 270 feet. One of the things we should come out of this is more input on how much land to allocate to the dog beach. We need to specify a number to give that design parameter to the engineers and planners and work with it. The other thing is, there's concern, rightly so, as to the, how to best separate a dog beach from a swimming beach, what physical separation. Design elements like that, we should be contemplating. The other imperative that we've already signed on to is to bypass, so make sure that we're, people are able to walk. How does that manifest itself in a design? How do you comply with Cook County guidelines for fenced-in dog enclosure and still be able to bypass that without needing a special permission? So these are design elements that should be discussed at that, you know, at that time. And then finally, you know, the, I probably would say it's probably the most urgent issue is our relationship to our neighbor to the south. As we learned on Monday from, excuse me, Tuesday, the village board meeting, for those of you who weren't there, there were very thorough presentations presented by the IDNR, the Army Corps, village engineer, village zoning director, and the village attorney. The village attorneys, Village Attorneys packet, if you haven't read it, it's an outstanding piece of work, very high compliments to Peter Friedman. One of the things that came out of that is, in Illinois, you got to have your feet wet, that's the general rule, but there are, there are, to be, not to be trespassing, you have to have your feet wet, but there are some inconsistencies to that, and there are guidelines, and then there are regulations. The IDNR and the Army Corps are in the business, they ask, their works that might, of issuing permits. You meet the criteria, a permit is issued. They are in the business of more recently issuing under a regional general permit. You meet these criteria, you conform to these, it's really not a big deal to issue a permit. We submitted a letter to 261 Sheridan opining on the design. Others have certainly opined on the design. I think most notable is the height of that stone groin going from 591 down to 587. Our plans currently contemplating 57, 55, 583, substantially lower. I see Cal Bernstein, who I believe you represent, 261, or excuse me, yeah, the owner of 205 Sheridan, you represent Orchard 2020, and again, extend the invitation and hope that that you or someone from, representing Orchard 2020 will be there. We have not had further dialogue or discussion with Orchard 2020, but I think it should become abundantly clear that, you know, our neighbor and our properties are but. We either will be subject to what Mr. Ishia decides to do on his property, or we can coordinate with and do something on our property. This is, this is the chance, this is the opportunity we promised to be very public in the design process. So this, this is an important meeting. I don't, I've gotten nothing back, I don't know, Cal, like, did I ask you, do you know if anybody's going to participate or not?
I'll pass along your message.
Yeah, thank you, I do, I do hope that...
Just to build on Warren's message, I had seen an email or some notes, I believe that at the Lloyd workshop, that there was very good collaboration with Chuck Doughty and the Jacksons, the neighbor there, to come to something. I remember seeing, I think it was an email from him where he had submitted comments and he was like, and now that we've met, I will share my comments with you directly and we can talk further. So I think it was a good...
We want to invite this guy.
A good dialogue and good opportunity to hold them forward productively together, so...
Warren, to your point, we should have at this, there might be other commissioners that want, that want to accomplish other things, that's fine.
Yep.
But we should perhaps have a placard that says, this is, these are some of the things that we are trying to get closer on, make objectives.
Objectives, yes.
That would be great. So we can't, we can't miss this opportunity.
Right.
So if we go in there like, eh, we're just going to listen, no, no, no. To your point, great point, we got to know exactly what we're trying to get out of this thing.
Scale wise, I've suggested that we have a board to help people understand the scale of Elder and Centennial at 1,000 feet end to end, relative to Lloyd end to end, from the far end of the boat launch parking lot to the other side of the parking lot, 730 feet. So you could take your 270 foot dog park and still have the entirety of Lloyd next to it. So there's a lot of real estate in which us to plan, let's, let's be thoughtful as to how we allocate those uses.
You know, I think it'd be incredibly helpful, for a lot of people, they don't understand how much beach is taken up by breakwaters. And so I think it would be really helpful to have, I don't know how you do this, you know, we talked about having three models, so people would look, and I guess that's just not practical at all. But, you know, depending on the size of the stone, you're losing a lot of beach, so...
So what I would, in response to that?
Yeah.
What I was suggesting, and I've asked Costa and Lakota, I haven't seen, I haven't seen it yet, but I'm hoping that we can have kind of an overlay comparison of Lloyd, because everybody has in their head what Lloyd looks like relative to what the potential is at Centennial and others.
Chuck has done something like that, I have not seen it in our packet, but I remember seeing him present it, where he had like an overlay of Lloyd and the master plan and the current plan, and I don't know if there's a way to capture that, just so that you could see.
Well, hopefully we'll see something tomorrow at the 9 o'clock, you know, show and tell about preparations.
And are you working on that with them?
I have had very little involvement up to this point. The first time I saw stuff was yesterday.
Well, I hope you are, that's what I'm saying.
I've tried to let Costa run the show here, I had nothing to do with the coastal engineering selection, you put, I think you put together the evaluation matrix.
I just sound mechanic, I didn't...
Right, so you helped.
Yeah, I...
That's okay. That's a good idea.
No, I agree.
I'm sure you read it.
I want this to be, I really want this to be a successful outcome.
Sure.
I really want that, I really want it to move us forward.
Yes.
I really want us, to sort of narrow us in, if it's possible, I want it to help us hone in and put some more pins in the path that leads us to some solution.
And it was actually Costa that had the idea of the bypass, which I thought had a lot of merit, and I'd like to see that further developed.
Costa, are you going to have space? You know, we've got urban developers here, we've got engineers here, when they hear workshop, they're thinking, well, I'd like to bring something to show you that I'm thinking about. And after the village meeting, it was really interesting, a gentleman who, who is now retired but very degreed, experienced urban developer, took our shoreline, and he kind of showed by drawings what it was going to look like if we had breakwater, 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 and then he kind of showed what it looked like if you had open beach, it's kind of awesome. So I wonder, are you going to have a space if people want to bring things in and set them up on easels or on tables?
Show and tell. I don't know, as long as the board's coming.
We have tons of room, give me that.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting, I think if it's going to be a workshop...
We're going to, so right now, I have 12 tables slated to be just open for the discussions.
Okay.
So there's going to be 12 tables, around 72 inch tables that can seat 10 people around them and gaming. And then we're going to have tables for entry, we're going to have a check-in area, we're going to have a Bible handout, we need to come in with some information about the layout of the room, and then we're going to have the station set up, so like I said, this is going to be an organic, more of a crew workshop setting. So that's what our objective is, and that's what we're going to try to accomplish. Now, I don't know that I'm going to meet everybody's mark 100%, but I'm going to try my best to do what we do and try to make this great for the community.
It sounds great, it really sounds very...
I feel like it's really evolved since our December presentation, David, I'm delighted to hear you talking about one, if you ask them what one's... Yeah, I like to volunteer. I love it.
It's hard, it's hard, but that's exactly what we need.
Yeah, no, that is what we need.
And the easy way to do it is a questionnaire and a ranking system, because, but it eliminates the, it eliminates the new qualitative interpretation. Yeah, but that's okay too, that's okay too.
I did have, like, just a few notes that I wanted to share out. One, in the caucus survey, when you slog through all the comments, a theme that emerges is dissatisfaction with the sand quality, and I do feel like it is going to be a constant marketing challenge for the park district with whatever beach project we do, to educate people on the fact that we need the heavier sand to retain it at the beach. Because people, even, even I have been in denial of that concept until I saw one of the engineering presentations circulated, and I'm like, I hate this outcome, but it is the reality of the situation. Like, I just feel like...
Can I digress? Can I go into that, can I go up into the weeds a little bit? Just a little bit.
Take your control.
Come on, just a little bit, honestly, because it's...
No, 30 seconds.
You've used 15 of those.
No, but I just think it's a fun, given the other important thing that I think that, especially following this mailer, is that checking the search optimization for our website, when people type in Elder Centennial, particularly as they're wanting to get up to speed in anticipation of this workshop, is that what comes up is like the landing page with the video of the former proposed plan. That does not feel good to the public. Like, so I just think that thinking about the website and how that lands, does that not feel good? I had mentioned to Christina at the library, they had a very simple page of their, you know, for, like, two options for, we're not collaborating, two options for the Northfield Library, all on one page, and I, I don't know if we can get to like a simple handout or a simple, something that just kind of summarizes the different sections on a couple pages where people have a very condensed view of, you know, things that they can integrate into a big picture. And then, my last question was, is there a chance to do some kind of post-workshop survey, not just of the people there, but take maybe pictures or take this two pager of what the key points were, so that we can get some feedback from the broader community for people who aren't there? Because I think we're going to miss people with kids, and I think like, for example, for the ADA access, and I have talked about this with Warren, one of the big user groups for ADA facilities are people with strollers.
Yeah.
And I think, in some ways, based on my observation, that is almost a larger user group of those facilities, and it's important to make sure that we're getting feedback from that group, because they are big beach users, particularly during the week. So those were my comments, but definitely I want to say, we've come a long way from our discussion in December, I'm glad to hear.
Thank you.
You know, thank you, Costa, I'm glad to hear.
A lot of the questions.
And Grace, I feel like that's great that the dollars going out, I feel like it's great that you are thinking through, like, more from a marketing perspective of what to do.
I should be saying thank you, Gracey too, because I know every step is going to be you too.
Okay, all right. Quick primer on sand, you know about lateral drift? It's the movement of sand north to south, lateral mass. Those fine particles of sand, they get picked up by the wind, they get blown, they get blown off tower, they go into the cooling ponds, they fill up our boat launch, and we have dredged those out of the boat launch and we put them on to Lloyd Beach. We also, two years ago, started on a sand management agreement between the folks at, between Elder, excuse me, Tower and Lloyd. There's 205 feet, again, some sense of scale, 205 feet between Tower and Lloyd, that has accreted over the years, more than 300 feet of additional beach through accretion by virtue of our building of the boat ramp. It's now four feet high because the concrete block, every time we add a concrete block, we get two more feet of sand. So we were trying to work with them to arrive at a sand management agreement that we could take that nice fine sand and replenish Lloyd, so ultimately we can get Lloyd to have that nice fine sand. We could also then stipulate in our contract for Elder and Centennial, that you do the primary fill with the heavier, coarser stuff that won't get washed away, and then pay, like Highland Park did, for the more expensive stuff that might get washed away right away.
Yes, yeah, but you know what, it was interesting, one of the engineering presentations, it sounded to me, reading it, was that when you put those fine stuff on the top, it like pollutes the stuff underneath so that that also washes away, but I, I feel like there's an education process around this.
Yeah, the good news of Elder and Centennial is that we have a much flatter lake bed profile, so it's inherently, inherently in a... So, yeah, we need to move aside. Costa.
One more, like, when David and I went out on our field trip, it was very educational to be reminded how large these beaches are. So I don't know, I don't think this will be possible for this workshop, but I just want to put out there, like, having a map of, if you're really interested in the beach here in the high points, here's where you need to walk to see what's, it's, because it was, like, the big breakwaters are definitely concerned, especially if you're standing next to them, you can't see over them, but when you see the scale of the beach, as long as you can still see out, it has a different, or you can go on top, or you can, it has a different... it has a different, or you can go on top, or you can, it has a different feel when you were out there on the beach, because it is so, it is so large. I don't know if you touched that, but.
All right, go ahead, folks.
One more, one more, one more, having been there a whole lot. Five seconds. The one thing about Elder and Centennial that is not true with our other beaches is you have huge panoramic views. You can look all the way into Chicago, you can see on a clear day Waukegan. So I think that, you know, however we communicate to people that we're protecting Lechver Vista, if that's what we as a group decide we want to do, it's what I heard from, from the village in the workshop study session. Lechver Vista is important. People are concerned about it.
Last comment, context. Gilson Park, Gilson Park, 60 acres, 3,500 feet of shoreline. Far South Bend, there's a 500 foot long stone breakwall and 220, 225 feet of dog beach. Elder Centennial is a thousand feet. We're currently talking about going up 220, not 500 with stone rocks. So context, scale, I have every expectation that we'll have panoramic views.
Lauren, it's having people who can visualize that.
I know, it's so difficult. I spent my career visualizing. That'll do discussion. We all have to do our homework. We have to learn to be present.
I truly apologize. I just want to make sure I understand this clear. Objectives to accomplish from this meeting, I hear it's a scale of stone, size of Dog Park, and then overlays to help visualize that and help people have context. Is there anything else in tonight's meeting that I want, besides the information, we make sure we're getting, survey information that we can use? And then I heard also, you know, updates for the landing page, and I know Grace has been taking notes on that. The elements of Dog Park, how to separate that, understanding that. Areas for, you know, peoples to bring their own creativities and their own illustrations that they want to help express or show different ideas and concepts. Is there anything else that I missed? I just want to make sure I captioned off.
Put the bypass, the discussion about your dog beach for the bypass.
That's already part of the bracket, so I didn't call that one out.
And then item four was the relationship with the neighbor to the south and how our plan fits together with what he does.
Yep, that's part of Station Six already. Yep, thank you, everybody.
Call our access.
Users of all. Also, suggestions on where to go if you're going to walk the beach.
The map and locations to show that, yeah, I got that.
Okay.
And are we capturing the location of the stair? Like, is that, I feel like that's different than the bypass. The bypass is going around the Dog Park, the Dog Beach area, the stairs. And then how are we getting views beyond the breakwaters?
We're stairs, we're steps up and down.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. It is now time for remarks from visitors. So remarks from visitors, your opportunity to address the board on any issue. Call the bond in front of the Senate position and front of the commission, state your name for the record. Speak directly to the board. Keep comments, please, under three minutes. And if you're getting a little beyond that, we'll certainly kind of wave at you. This is not a question and answer forum, so you do not expect a response or answer from the park board this evening. If you prefer to share your comments in writing, you may use the covenant cards, which are available near the back of the room, and any Park District staff, which have your card to be shared with the board. So at this point in time, you've all been very patient. I appreciate that. We would like to address the board first. Back to the room. Come on up, Mary. Thank you for guarding the door, by the way. I appreciate it.
I'd like to have a job. Mary Garrison.
Mary, hang on one second. Is the camera going to capture that Mary's speaking?
It'll hear her for sure. It'll see her, but it'll.
If you'd like to capture her, she'll have to come up towards the front.
Mary, are you comfortable getting a little closer with us or?
It'll be the back view.
Thank you, Mary.
This is kind of a question, but I guess I should say in the statement, the cost for each one of these different designs to be presented also on sand. It seems to me that people should know the cost. Some cost more than others. Not a question, just a suggestion. I also, from past experience, know that people's time is very valuable and to get them there for a whole morning is really difficult. In some way, it is very difficult. On the ADA, I know John McGovern quite well, he's an expert for sure. I'd like to just know who this Mr. Colt is.
Colt, he heads up the NSR.
He's the NSR, that's where I've been. I was disappointed with him the last time because he was kind of after Winneka that he didn't have ADA facilities and we do. And I really was disappointed with that. Because I'm a big ADA person, so I think that that was, was not to our best interest. The village meeting the other night was terrific, but we all realize that. But it did come across to me that the Army Corps issues permits. It did come across to me that the IDNR is a little bit more specific. So I am all for, and I know not everybody is, especially the lake people, the village coming into the process with some kind of frameworks. I will rank them about that. Because I think the Army Corps and the IDNR, I mean, big, big projects is really me where they go. More not our kind of projects. The Lloyd perspective, when we look at that in the sand, we all know about that sand. It's not really delightful. But also the perspective of Lloyd is so much larger than what we're talking about in depth to the water, from the, sort of the water to the water, than Centennial and Elder, which mirror it. And so the sand does kind of worry me there. And I didn't know if there was any way that, we don't have to put that sand over the whole thing. It's only parts of it could, but when the waves come in, I, you know, I'm not into all that. But it just seems like less of that rocky sand is better for people who want to use it for a beach. Thank you for asking about the lady golfers.
Since you're at the end of the round, the ladies are all over here.
We're all. I know that the women's, the women's golf club has really gone down. And one of the reasons was because they were looking forward to this not getting golf mixed in. So there's, I hope there will be some real effort to get some of those people back. Again, thank you for the packet at the library. And I read the village one there, and it was 148 pages to that. It was easier to read there than it is to read on the phone. So I was thinking on the website, when people go in now to the website, could there be a pop-up screen, like they can't get in unless they see Centennial Elder? Is there any way to do that on the, okay, well. In other words, if you don't want to do it, you got the X up at the top and yeah. And the people are still, the ones I talked to, they want Elder open, they want Elder open. I don't care about the rest right now. I think we're going to get that, that kind of sent. Thank you for everything. It seems like it's coming along.
Thanks, Mary. All right, next person? Come on up.
I'm Christian Miller and I live at 246 Scott. And I believe it has been shown we need additional shoreline protection at Elder Centennial beaches from structures being built by private property owners. The IDNR and the Army Corps of Engineers are short-staffed and they don't seem to have enough oversight of building projects that they have already green-lighted on, on these beaches. Because we've had a lot of these breakwater pocket beaches built that means you cannot walk the beachfront, even if you wanted to keep your feet wet. You're climbing rocks. I did that yesterday. I walked the beach from Lloyd South. And I had to do the limbo under somebody's boat ramp. Somebody has built a boat ramp into the water. You can't, you can't walk the beachfront. Also, the steps that are, that were built that go from Lloyd to the southern neighbor, it's washed out at the bottom, okay? I use walking sticks because I have nerve damage in my foot. So I was lucky I had those walking sticks just to try to get up on those steps. They're, one of those steps is this high. Who is going to go up a step this high? They're, they're not practical. Yesterday, there was a very informative village council meeting and we learned that neighbors must be consulted on waterfront projects. The Park District is a neighbor of Orchard 22 Project and is tasked with protecting our public interest as their future building projects go up. They're going to build something there. We're trying to build something. Let's be good neighbors about it. And, and because of that, I say, I have always been against the exchange of land. I hope that Park District Commissioners reconsider the swap and maybe look for creative solutions to purchase the property between Elder and Centennial to expand the beachfront park. I look forward to the workshop presentation on the 21st. Unfortunately, my daughter, who has three children, will not be there because she has activities with all her kids. And I think it's kind of impractical to ask people to stay. You know, we, we can vote on things and we'll look at these things. But then a lot of people won't be able to stay for these roundtable discussions. It's a really nice idea, but I think you're, you're going to have difficulty having people stay for them. And in addition, I will bring my son to this meeting, who is a coastal engineer. We grew up here. And because we grew up loving the beach, that's why he is a coastal engineer. And his big thing is, there should be much more beach nourishment. It's not that expensive as opposed to putting in huge breakwaters. You can bring in sand. And I looked and I talked to the IDNR guy about clean sand. And I say, where do you get clean sand? And he said, you get it from the woods. Well, we got them there. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person? No one else for remarks from visitors? All right, we're going to move on to new business. So, let's start. Board Guidelines, section 14.14, Primary Function of the Board.
I doubt it.
If you're with me, I really want to at least read it before we get into a discussion of it. So, 4.14 is we currently have it in the manual. I will simply read it. So here we go. The Park Board's major function is to establish policy through the majority vote at duty call and authorize park board meetings. Through its policymaking functions, the board determines physical procedures, personal matters, operational procedures, fees and charges, land dispositions, and facility development. Specifically included in the above items are the following. A, to provide the levy of taxes pursuant to the authority granted by the statute. Such levies shall provide for various operational concerns by fund so that sufficient revenue is generated to provide quality parking, recreation, and all activities. B, decide upon proper use of funds generated by revenue-producing facilities after operational needs are satisfied and enact periodic adjustments in the operational policies of said revenue-producing facilities to ensure proper and meaningful controls for the benefit of the entire district and not just the revenue-producing facility itself. C, the board should employ an executive director of the Park District as the district's chief executive officer upon whom the board places its reliance and authority for the judicious administration of day-to-day operations of the Park District. The executive director of the Park District shall be charged with executing the board's policy, enforcing its rules and regulations, and acting as an advisor to the board by preparing or causing to be prepared written reports for the board which recommends a course of action. D, the board shall adopt and periodically review a set of rules and regulations affecting all full-time, part-time, and seasonal personnel in a document known as, quote-unquote, "Personal Policies of the Winneka Park District," unquote. E, the board shall continually monitor the operational procedures of Park District and make additions or alterations to set procedures at duty call and authorized board meetings. The integral board members shall keep themselves informed of the activities and functions of the district by observation, comments from its citizens, rate, citizens, sorry, it's a. And reports presented to the staff of the Park District. The board shall act decisively on issues brought before it in the best interest of the district as a whole. Park Board members should make decisions involving the welfare of the community as a whole based on a study and evidence rather than on feelings, prejudices, personal opinions, or other similar subjective factors. Such judgment requires mutual considerations of varying points of view before final action is taken. Park Board members should accept the principle of board unity and the subordination of personal interests by accepting and supporting majority decisions of the board and identifying themselves with board policies and actions. Letter F, the board should be responsible for establishing the operational philosophy of recreational programming for the Park District and setting fees and charges to be approved at a duly authorized and attended board meeting. Letter G, the board shall recognize that land acquisition is of primary importance to the provision of leisure services and the proposition that open space judiciously placed produces benefits for active and passive use. Accordingly, the board may prepare and periodically update a land acquisition plan supported by a set of land acquisition criteria which will assist in evaluating various parcels. Cooperative ventures with local, county, state, regional, and national levels should be recognized as important and integral processes toward the early acquisition of parcels which otherwise may be too costly for one agency to purchase. Every state and federal land grant program should be viewed as a vehicle for financial assistance. Such grants must be reviewed carefully for terms and conditions which may be considered unreasonable or unduly restrictive. Letter H, the board shall direct itself to the established and continual care of a well-rounded and broadly-based park system recognizing the diverse needs and interests of the district's constituency. And we get two ethics, so that's letter I. Board member code of ethics. As a member of the board team, I will, one, listen carefully to my board colleagues. Two, respect the opinion of fellow board members. Three, respect and support the majority decisions of the board. Four, recognize that all authority is vested in the full board only when it meets in compliance with all laws. Five, keep well informed about developments relevant to issues that may come before the board. Six, participate in board meetings and actions. Seven, bring to the attention of the board any issues I believe will have an adverse effect on the agency or those we serve. Eight, attend to interpret the needs for those we serve to the agency and interpret the actions of the agency to those we serve. Nine, refer complaints to the proper level on the chain of command. Ten, recognize that my role is to ensure that the agency is well managed and not to manage the agency. Eleven, represent all those whom this agency serves, not just a particular geographic area or interest group. Number 12, consider myself a, quote, trustee, unquote, of the agency and do my best to ensure that it is well maintained, financially secure, growing and always operating in the best interest of those we serve. Thirteen, always work to learn how to do my job better. Fourteen, declare conflicts of interest between my personal life and my position on the board and abstain from voting or discussions where appropriate. As a board, as a member. As a Board, as a member of the Board, I will not, one, criticize fellow Board members in or out of the boardroom. Two, use the agency for my personal or business advantage or for the advantage of my friends or relatives. Three, discuss confidential proceedings of the Board outside of the boardroom. Four, promise a meeting how, promised before a meeting how I will vote on an issue. Five, interfere with the duties of the Executive Director or staff or undermine the administrator's authority with staff members. That is Section four point one-four. So, a couple of things. One, there's an I, uh, IDNA, uh, annual meeting, which they haven't been able to do because COVID. I think some of you have signed up for it. I will tell you, this is a great thing to be before you go to that meeting so you can see how other agencies act, how they feel about these things. I personally think these are great criteria for Board members. Can always enhance them. I think it's our obligation, uh, which we haven't had the opportunity to do based on COVID and based on certainly things happening with the beach and other where, to update policy manual. I believe, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like every, every periodically, it's supposed to be reviewed.
Two or three years.
Right, so we've done it once while I was on the Board. Always used to be my favorite thing at a board meeting, say, hey, let's go through the policy manual.
Can you hear me and I taking it on again with staff unless you want?
Yeah, oh, no, no, I know. Well, I'm coming off the Board in May, so.
Oh, I'm fired up to meet with you, whatever you want to mean.
How many days, Mickey?
Uh, have a common day. All right, so again, this is just a reminder, it's always good to just refresh. It's something we have to constantly think about as we go about our actions, as we talk to people, as we do things. This probably needs to be enhanced for, uh, how we handle requests, what we go through. So, that is one suggestion that I have, because we have talked about it before. And as we get requests of staff, you know, what is that process for getting requests for staff to do things? So, talk about it, if we want to open it up for discussion now.
Hold on, I mean, I thought we were reviewing the, um, Code of Ethics, right? With, on this agenda item?
Yeah, that's what you just said.
Okay, but that's not request to staff, correct?
No, no, I said if you want to add to stuff, that is, so you have this ethics and then other things.
Okay, so you're adding it to, as part of the policy.
It's part of the discussion thing that we should probably reconsider adding to the manual because we have talked about what's the process, how should we do it? Who's gonna answer this stuff? Who should it go to and who decides? So, that's one suggestion I have for the policy manual. That's a discussion point, I'll open it up.
To, to, you're saying to make an, um.
A change.
A formal policy. To the policy document. I, I would, again. I think each and every Board member should have access to staff. Tonight's a perfect example, actually. When we've got, we've got this wonderful, we've got this wonderful event on the twenty-first, there's a lot of questions we all have. And I think it would muck it up if we had to go, generally, I think ninety-nine percent of the time. One percent is just an error. If I send an email to staff, I CC you, just to keep you on the flow. Not necessarily asking your permission. I try not to inundate staff, but there's a lot of questions I might have with Costa after his presentation tonight. I don't want to have to go through Warren or John to ask those questions. I don't want to have to go through you when someone calls me and says, hey, what's going on with the outdoor ice rink? I call, I kind of know what's going on while we're not doing it. I call Kyle. It's literally a three-minute conversation. I then contact the, the resident that went after it. I just think that if this is, if this is an introduction, have a discussion about control, I'm just, I'm not for it. I think it comes really down not to policy, it comes down to management. Warren's got to manage the Board, it's the President, and you've got to manage the Board and the staff. That's the way I look at it. I don't think we need a policy change to control people's access to staff. That's my view of it.
Other comments? Christina?
I, I. I think we need to empower the staff to push back if they are on a deadline for a project or for a meeting, and the demand or the request is onerous. I, I think it's fair to empower the staff to say, look, I can't do it now. My, my, this, my plate is full, this is what I'm working on. I can reasonably get this to you in two weeks. If you consider it to be more urgent, can you circle up with the Board? Because I, I, I'm, I'm booked. And I'm thinking of Costa. Because Costa, he has pretty much every single project we have. He is in charge of, a resource for, or, um, he has an ongoing management responsibility of personnel who do that. So, he's either observing it as a manager, he's creating it as a professional of, of the leadership team, or he's answering questions about it to shape it. So, I'd like to give staff the authority to say to each of us, I can't do it.
I've always assumed that.
Yeah, I, I have too, but I have also seen staff go above and beyond so consistently, and we have lost staff who have been so stretched because they felt they couldn't say it. So, I, I think I would like to empower the staff to say, not all the time, you know, this five-minute request. Sneeze number four thousand today. But I would like to empower the staff to say, I can't do it right now. I, I can, I can fit it in in two weeks, I can fit it in in six weeks. I don't think it's important. You know, I'm gonna ask for a second opinion on this one. Because I think, I trust the judgment of the staff to accept or push back, but it's, I, but I think culturally, it's been very difficult for them to do so.
Colleen, comment? Question? Don't have to.
Oh, I'm happy to have a comment. It's interesting because, uh, I have had very few requests of staff in my two-year tenure, except for the Executive Director, and I'm still waiting, two years later, for certain things that I asked for two years ago. And so, I look at this, and I kind of think, my point in, in, in mentioning this is I think staff kind of handles what they want to provide, and, and, and I think, I think you do. I mean, Costa, I know how busy you are. I would, I am always very concerned with your time. I think I've met with you three times in my two years, and I've always wanted to meet with you and your companions. You are amazing, you're always available, and you're always so nice. And if you can't, you'll say, hey, I'll get back with you. You know, I think it happens right now. I don't know, we need any more rules or regulations. And, uh, again, I'll make another comment. Communication is not always equal with all commissioners. Some commissioners have information others do not receive. And so, my concern is, is if we're going to have more rules and more levels and more hierarchies, then those of us that don't always receive information will be even less informed. I don't think we need to change this. I'm with David. I, I think that staff should be empowered to say, get lost, we don't have time for you. When we do, we'll let you know.
Okay, Cynthia?
I would say that I personally always try to be very respectful of staff's time. I think that I've had very, very few meetings where I have not been with another commissioner. Typically coming because we're both coming up to speed. Still, there's lots we don't know after two years. But, um, yeah, so I balance that. When I've asked for things, there's always flexibility of time. I can't think of any situation where I'm like, I need this right now. It just always, you know, I can delay. Costa, you know, I just said, how are we doing on the RFQ? To John and Costa, they took a few days to say, we've had three responses. We'll be ready to cover it at the board meeting. Great, I'm glad there were some responses, that was news, that was fine, good, yay. So, I try to be very measured, and I agree with David's point about control. Because I think there are lots of cases where other people have information that not all commissioners have. And that is a problem, because we are all empowered deeply as commissioners.
I, I think, really relates to one issue, I, I believe.
Can we all?
I'll, 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 I'm sorry.
No, I was ready.
Warren?
So, I'm gonna relate a personal experience that I think is very analogous to this situation. I spent twenty-four years in family business. There were six of us Jameses in the family business at one time, and we had a corporate headquarters, and we had a construction office. And I, uh, moving up the ranks and heading up operations, finally found it necessary for me to do what I wanted to do, to move from the corporate headquarters out to the construction office. And it was only then that I understood the problem that I perceive here. Because when I was sitting in that office, I would hear the other Jameses call. And when they called, they didn't think that it was much of an imposition because they were only calling once or twice. But when you heard the phone ring, and then you heard another James ring, and another James ring, and all of a sudden you realized that these people didn't have control over their days. Because they knew that it wasn't James calling and you needed to respond. It's a Board member calling, and you need to respond. If you're in a meeting, okay, I get it. But you don't think that your phone calls or your requests are as impactful as they are. And it's very difficult for a staff member or a, a junior employee to say, hey, I'm really swamped, I'm too busy at this moment, I can't handle this, or I need to prioritize this. And so, I think that is the role of the Executive Director. So, we do assign leadership roles, President, Vice President, we have an Executive Director. I think our requests need to go through Executive Director. We are short-staffed. We are, we do have a new HR Director. It's a terrific hire, looking forward to repopulating some of the lost staff. But my experience is that you don't realize how much impact, you don't realize how difficult it is for that employee to not immediately address their concern. So, I would prefer that we are very deferential to Executive Director Peterson and let him manage the agency and him prioritize, and then we come here. And I, I will tell you, one of my greatest frustrations on this Board is moving at the speed of municipal government versus the private sector. And that's because we are constrained by OMA.
Right.
And we can only communicate properly every two weeks. It's a challenge. It definitely constrains our productivity. But, you know, I'm, over six years, I've come to appreciate that this is excessive.
Well, I can just speak for my, I mean, I, I agree with Colleen that for some requests, I feel that people can wait in perpetuity. Like, I, I, you know, feel like there is something to be said for FOIA because you know you have an answer in five days, right? I'm with the statute. And so, as a Board member, it is frustrating when you have asked legitimate questions to execute your duties as a Commissioner, and you never hear a response, never. Like, months and months. I mean, it is frustrating.
My turn. So, I mean, literally going on the heels of that stuff. So, we've had this discussion before, and, and it came up because the staff was being overstretched, and we have lost staff. So, David, you know, it's a balancing act for us. Yeah, if you want to ask a question, no one's gonna say, no, I'm sorry, it's not in the manual, can't do it. But the point is, you are one of seven people. And I start asking, hey, John, can we do poker nights? It isn't enough question, but then something else he has to deal with. And the answer is no, probably, Steve. But, you know, multiply times seven. So, that's one aspect. And we lost staff because of that, because it became overwhelming. Point number two, it's not fair for staff to make a decision for what they will or will not answer for you. It's not their job. They have day jobs, they have responsibilities, and if a Commissioner's calling them, they absolutely feel the pressure of, oh my God, it's a Commissioner calling me, I gotta truck that I'm doing, to address what they're doing. It's human nature, I understand it, but multiply that times all the requests come in, and it multiplies, and it can very easily get overwhelming. And that's what happened, and that's why we lost staff. So, my suggestion was, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to be pounded at the desk and put in here and go crazy, but, you know, we've asked people to be mindful. To some degree, it worked, to some degree, it didn't work. And I can understand the frustration of not getting an answer right away, but you know what? We better be prepared for it. So, if they're overwhelmed, please let me finish. If we're overwhelmed and they can't get to it, it's not there for Costa, Kyle, anybody else on staff to say, you really think they're gonna say, you know, I really can't get to this this week, and I'll get it back to you in two weeks? They're gonna come to it. So, all I was thinking was that at least if John, who's managing this staff, is aware of the request, then it's a way to help manage. And it's far better for John to say, here's the situation, here's where we are, here's when we believe we can get back to you, or, you know what? At this point in time, we can't do it, or, you know what? We're not gonna do it. And then, if you're not gonna do it, and it picks you off, great, bring it into this room and we have a meeting. So, you know, I, so I don't want to make the mountain out of mohill, but kind of like, nah, we don't do it that much, and it's getting better. We've been seriously burdened by this. I'm coming off the Board, but I would hate to see a future Board, or, I want to protect staff, and I don't think it's fair for them to play judge and jury on my requests. That's all I was coming for. So, I'd like John to manage it, and for Warren and Christina, they're, like, they're, are, they're our leadership. So, they should at least be aware of the requests, because you know what? They might overrule it, or they might say, oh, yeah, we really gotta jump on this thing. So, it's information and hopefully support or denial, but it absolutely is manage it from this perspective. So, again, that's all I would like to see achieved in this thing. If you want, you know, I think there needs to be something in the manual that just say, this is the flow or the process. And that's what I would like this part to do. Right, hang on, so I do want John to speak.
Okay. So, I do, uh, you know, again, I go back to what we said in a, another meeting. I try and measure people by intent. So, each of the commissioners well-intended in the communication or request. But in a prior life, I would measure frequency and severity of matters, that matter. And, uh, and also from a legal perspective, the frequency of requests is much greater than any one of you Board members understand. And sometimes the severity of the request or the required work from a staff member is much greater than you would ever anticipate. So, then, you know, just going through the back, the past month, whether it's been budget, now the work on the, the January twenty-first meeting, all the other things that come up, there are, there are holiday, you know, we miss holidays. You give a staff member a Friday and a Monday off around Christmas or New Year's, we're not taking those days off if it's Costa or me. Because the number of requests to come in is pretty unbelievable, and the depth of required work to get it done is remarkable. And again, it's a well-intended request, but I think Mickey said it well. The paradigm that each Commissioner has is unique to that Commissioner, and not understanding that there are six other Commissioners, maybe not all six, but six other Commissioners that can and do ask for a response. And it is the staff's interest to respond in a manner that, I don't know if it's to please the Commissioners, but certainly to get back in as prompt of a time as possible, to the extent that we can. But, you know, we have, I, I love the Code of Ethics. It says, recognize that my role is to ensure that the agency is well managed, not to manage the agency. And in a prior life, when I was on the Board, that was, that was, that's how I sat on this Board. I can't necessarily do that on the staff side. But the number of times that we would lean into staff was very limited. Because the staff has so much to do each day just to get financial information, and just to do the interviews for the, the, the engineering firm. and just to do the interviews for the engineering firms, to do interviews for candidates, to get, I mean, the number of things we're doing, and you would not know it. But these are things that are doing, that are being done at six in the morning, and, you know, until one in the morning, pretty much every day, but for maybe a Sunday morning. And Costa and I talked about this today. We will work like dogs to get it done, to the detriment of our health, or to the detriment of our families, or friendships, or whatever it might be. But you don't understand, I mean, just listening to the requests now coming in for the 21st, of all the different things we will now need to respond to, beginning the 13th, we have eight days. We're gonna try and take Saturday or Sunday to do some things, maybe. But we have that much work to be done just to get to the 21st, based on the evolution of, again, well-intended requests from the board. So we're working on staff. We're trying to get marketing colleagues in. And all the things that are necessary for staff. But those people that have been referenced, maybe, you know, they left, you know, because of the constancy of the requests. And so I do wanna focus on recognizing your role to be ensuring that the agency is well-managed, not to manage the agency. And to think through the every-two-weeks meetings as forums in which to have dialogue. And, you know, David, respectful of, David's been charged, as has Christina, but I think the Commissioner Seaman has run the play for the finance advisory community. So when he's in working with Jim, or if I lean in, and I get it, right? That's something the board has asked him to do. But there are so many different independent requests that come of us. It is, and it's just from the board, by and alone, what comes in from the community.
So that was, so anything more to add?
I have a couple things more to add.
Sure, go ahead.
One, I had asked John Peterson, as part of the budget, to include a staffing plan. And what I'm hearing, again, is that it sounds like we are not adequately staffed for what we need to do. And...
So do you wanna plan, or did you want the actual spreadsheet showing what the auditors put together, which I have to then recreate what the auditors are putting together, to answer your question? Like, where are we at today, or what are we planning to do? So I know we have that within the body of the budget, but...
I haven't seen, like, is the number growing sufficiently to alleviate some of the burden on you and Costa?
A couple hundred thousand dollars versus 22 budget.
So I think we need to understand that. Number two, in other entities, other park districts, other government entities, to manage this stuff, I've observed a couple things. One, staff are producing reports that communicate what they're doing. So that addresses lots of, it addresses lots of questions, right? In an efficient way.
Well, that's what we do at Warren.
It's basically a management tool. No, my motive saying is, for example, Len Coe is an example, the waterfront supervisor. You have a report on what's going on. It answers many questions. It's a management tool. It's a management tool for the executive director, and it also gives the board a window to say, okay, everything's being taken care of. The executive director is managing the agency, and we can see that. The other thing that I have observed is that, for example, Nutriere, they have a matrix that they discuss at every board meeting, that's board members' requests for staff research and suggested future agenda items. And so it has the requester's name, it has who's accountable administratively, it has the date of the response, it has what's been completed and what's not been completed. And I think that what I'm hearing is, you know, you're getting overwhelmed. We don't have visibility to what other people have asked for, and there's no, like, management process around handling that. So I think, you know, I mean, I can tell you as a board member, it's frustrating to be asking for stuff, and you never get it. It would be useful to have it as a matrix that we see, so that we know that you're prioritizing that request further down. It would be useful, as D36 does, to have a matrix of what their FOIA requests were that the board, a board member, reports on at every meeting. So that if you are interested in that topic, or as a leading indicator of things that the community is interested in, you have it. And then if you are interested and so inclined in looking at the information, you know, oh my goodness, it's already been prepared.
So broadly, conceptually, you're saying you wouldn't have any many inquiries, or maybe the board wouldn't, if you got more proactive communication from reports, reports during a board meeting from executive directors now?
Potentially, or like Len Coe, they have their financial report for the year, like, on their website, with all their vendor expenses for the whole year summarized. It's just available. You don't have to ask anyone. You can just have it.
But, Steve, you wanna open?
Well, I just think that these are great points. I think there's a big difference between Nutriere and the Wenecro Park District. Wenecro Park District doesn't have an administrative assistant. You know, when, Nutriere probably has a team of administrative assistants. There's probably fifteen people that are devoted to those types of issues. I can tell you, and at the same time, I really think it's a good point that Mickey made about, these aren't bad-intended, bad-intended requests. These are legitimate requests coming from commissioners. The problem is that you have almost no staff to deal with this, and you have this extremely large, complex, long-running, controversial issue that is everybody's concern.
All concerned.
And so everybody is firing constantly at JP all kinds of requests for information, activity, what's going on with this, with that. He wouldn't even have time to organize a chart to tell you how many FOIAs are out there right now. I mean, I'm just, maybe I'm being a little hyperbolic.
I hope you hear, as you're doing them.
Well, if somebody tells me to do it, I'll do it. I'm not gonna do it and say, why would you do this? You know?
No, but these are record, my point is, these are recorded on by board members. Like, this chart, I mean, is it brought by an administrative person? I would think it is.
Probably. I would bet it is.
It's a matrix. It's a spreadsheet.
Because they don't come into a board person usually.
Yeah.
But the point is, I don't think there's anybody's fault here. I think the problem is that we just, that the staff doesn't have enough bodies right now. And you've got an extraordinary demand on a very light staff, and you've got two people that are willing to work day and night and trying their best to try to get everybody taken care of, but it's just not enough. If you can get more bodies in, you're probably gonna have a much better result, but that's been a challenge to the labor.
I think it's also the management process, though. I mean, it's process as well as people.
Well, but you gotta have people to run a process.
I would be happy to keep track of the FOIAs, unless someone wants to forward them to me. I would love that. I would well do that.
We can talk about providing labor between board and staff. That's not what I'm expecting.
D36 said, like, board member presents on it.
You're speaking. I don't wanna speak now. It really is, let's decide what's important. So, you know, for somebody, it might be important to go, hey, I, you know, give me a report, and I will vote for it. Sorry. That's being in the weeds. Pardon the pun. It's like, we really have, what do we want for reports? Because I gotta tell you, the park district's been around for over a hundred years. This has never been an issue before, certainly not my type of report. Sorry. I'll get to you. So it's like, you really have to be cognizant, B, not everything is ultra-important, and that might be difficult for some board members to say, okay, how am I gonna do that? And that was my point to, to get it to a central point. Everyone, excuse me, everyone's gonna be able to respond. We are short-staffed. We're addressing it. But we, you know, we can't say everything is as important as everything else. There has to be a prioritization, and maybe that's something that the board should be working on, for what are the, what are the reports that are important, and what are the stuff that are nice to have? And, you know, if we don't get it, like, goes on. Colleen?
Okay, well, I just wanna make a comment. I think there are more than two people who are willing to work until they drop. Gracie, I was here many late nights as we were getting a website out. Jim, I've never seen you not working, and so I think all of our staff is, all of our staff should be commended, and that there's a huge work ethic of the staff we have. You know, I'm a dumb old and tired lawyer. What do I know about it? This is what I do know, is when I had cases, and the cases were extremely demanding, I was a solo practitioner with an admin and a legal assistant. When I had those cases, it's what I suggested to you last September. You bring in temporary staff if you have to, but you bring them in, and you get them going. And you'd be surprised how that helps your, for me, my admin and my legal assistant. Because I could then delegate the non-essential work, and we could focus on the essential work of the case. So...
And your suggestion was actioned upon. So we have a third-party providing our meeting minutes. So I send them out, I then review them early in the morning, so that I can keep that process going. We've allocated the FOIA process entirely to Steve Adams. So those are steps to your point. And Beth, well, we've allocated some responsibilities to a third-party PR firm. Beth Oster's done great. We have interviews for our marketing representatives. We have, you know, a list of candidates that we'll look at, one or two for administrative purposes. So we'll staff up. But right now, I think, and has been the case for the last year, and staff has worked their chops off, but the number of requests that are coming in from board, you know, and they are very well-intended. I've been, I'll give you a couple of examples. Where are we on our, where are we on our summer tennis tournament? Well, it's not our summer tennis tournament, but I gotta figure out how to answer that question for a board member and a resident. Where are we on tennis babysitting? So I gotta answer that by going back to Perderma, looking at it from a legal perspective, from a staffing perspective, and different perspectives that would give us the ability to answer the commissioner's request. Those are, again, well-intended requests, but they are, they are, you know, on top of all the other requests that come in. So I kinda think we're...
So I just wanna say one thing. I just wanted to provide some data for anybody who doesn't know what the data was from May until September. We had, and usually we have June, July, August, one meeting. And it's usually a two-and-a-half, two- or three-hour meeting, so let's call it nine hours. We had forty-eight and a half hours of meetings. So we had almost over, almost five times, over five times. Okay? And that, all those meetings, they had to be transcribed, and posted, and corrected, and...
And corrected.
And reviewed, corrected and reviewed, and reviewed and reviewed. So that was number one. Number two, we had FOIAs. So I personally spent nineteen hours satisfying a FOIA question. Number three, we had chats with commissioners. I personally spent with commissioners at this table ten-and-a-half hours. This is just from May till September. It doesn't include the October meetings. Meetings are going until 11:30 at night. So, and I'm not, I'm not saying, oh, poor me, but that's just the meeting piece. The beyond the meeting piece, the holiday piece, the beyond the meeting piece, which is the requests, the work that we generate to answer the requests, and the legal work. I mean, we gave legal people the tightest deadline ever, and they had to turn documents December 30th. I mean, the village did the same thing with their work. We're all busy. But it's like, holidays have disappeared, and this is downtime. This is supposed to be our quiet season in the park district. The summer, the spring, summer, and fall are our busy, busy seasons, because we have so many events. So this is, this was our time to, their staff time to kind of rest and recoup, and it has not been the case. So those are just the data pieces for all of us, that we've all lived this year.
So I actually think we're in an airplane, LaGuardia, Friday, rainy, and then on the tarmac for four hours, and you know what? We're gonna take off in ten minutes. I actually think we're at a crescendo of, like, get me off this frickin' plane, but in ten minutes, we're actually taking off. I actually think that's where we are. We got library done. We got Kemper done, although obviously you're watching Kemper right closely.
Yeah.
I am willing, I don't want a new policy. I, if you want me to email you, say, John, CC Warren, and the individual, this will, this will happen...
Next time.
Once every four months. I'm willing to do that. I'll email you, I'll email the staff member, and I'll CC Warren. So that board is aware, you're aware, it comes back, says, you know what, sorry, man, you gotta wait. I'm willing to do that. I just think setting a policy for an extremely unique period of time, in many, many manners, is a good policy. So I'm willing to do that. I just CC'd you. I haven't necessarily sent it to you. And do you say no? But no.
And David, that's exactly what I am trying to achieve in this thing, is it's easy to assume stuff, and it's been overwhelming. We've just proven it this year. It's been overwhelming. So as long as John is aware of it, they can manage it. And for Warren and Christina, that they're just aware of it. Again, they'll be advocates for what's the right way to go. So I don't wanna make it onerous, but it's become onerous. So now it's become the thirty-seven-hour train ride that's supposed to get to Orlando. So if everyone kinda, hang on, if everyone just kinda gets that, and, you know, hey, shake my hands, can we, you know, can we be a lot more cognizant and better about this stuff? And at least make sure John isn't forum. One, two, not put the burden on staff to reply. And yes, David, if you're chatting with Jim, those are direct conversations you're having anyway. So, yeah, you know, there's like common sense to this stuff. And I'm just looking for the common sense, because if it hasn't been working, it's been overwhelming. I hope you're right. This stuff starts to temper down. You know, five-hour meetings, three-hour meetings. Mary could probably tell you, when I first came on board, if you were on the board with me, it was a one-hour meeting. We got a lot done. But no one was making all kinds of requests, either. They trusted staff for what they were doing.
There you go. They trusted staff. They trusted their board members.
Well, if you don't trust staff, then that's a different issue. So all I, yeah, I'll get to you, Colleen. Again, all I'm asking you is basically what David just summarized, is be cognizant of it, at least making sure John is aware of it, same for Warren and Christina. And that way, hopefully, can be better managed, and we get better responses. So that's one, and then two, not put the burden on staff to be judge and jury for what they're gonna work on. It's not fair to that. Okay, Colleen?
I'm real confused. Anytime I reach out to staff, I always copy you, John, and I typically copy you, Warren, and lately, I've been also including you. So this has been my modus of operation. So I'm just real confused about, you know, why we're having this conversation tonight. I understand, John, you're overwhelmed. But again, I'll go back to September of '22, maybe '26. Time to bring in groups?
We're working on that, but it's not the mode of communication of the request. It's the frequency and severity, if you go to that. It's the number of requests that are coming in, and the required response to each request. Again, everybody is well-intended, has been and continues to be well-intended. The staff is well-intended to try and respond. It's just a paradigm of Mickey asking a question, you know, on different things, and he's been respectful. But, you know, we had three requests come out of Mickey, you know, in the last week, some of which are, you know, required responses to those requests. He was not what on, you know, you weren't being, you know, trying to cause us harm. You weren't just asking for issues that were of interest to you, not knowing what's going on with the other six commissioners.
Yeah.
And that's happening seven times a year.
There has to be a gatekeeper. A gatekeeper is, the gatekeeper is the executive director. That is his role. If this, if the policy was that all requests go to John, and you could copy the staff member, that would be more appropriate, because then John would be in a position, the staff member would know of your request, John would be in a position to direct the staff member. But I defer to you.
It still comes down with frequency, Warren.
I get it.
The number of times you guys ask for things is...
But it's all to go to you. If you have to be the gatekeeper, you have to run the agency.
Okay.
Well, may I make one final comment?
Sure, ma'am.
You know, it's somewhat ironic, but rather than bother staff and bother you, John, with all the FOIA requests that came in, there was information on those FOIAs that I wanted. I reached out to the people that made the request of the FOIA, and I said, can I have a copy of what you've received? I learned a great deal. I think that other commissioners have asked, when FOIAs are issued, why not copy the material? I asked that initially. It didn't happen. So, you know, why not? And Mr. Adams, if you are still handling FOIAs, when you go ahead and provide the information on the FOIA, why don't you have, you know, your staff... why don't you have, you know, your staff just, you know, give a leg for the, to the commissioners? We'll learn a great deal.
My protocol had always been to copy JP with the response, and, you know, with the assumption that he's gonna handle the communication beyond that. So, you know, I mean, if the board wants to give me a directive to copy everybody on every FOIA request, I'll take that.
Well, again, why?
Kyle's not here, but I think that, you know, diligent community, libraries, internal, external, a lot of this can be handled through software and everybody understanding how to use the software. So I think that we should come up to speed on the facilities that are available to us already through diligent community.
Well, I think we are already there, Warren.
No, I mean posting documents.
Posting the FOIA responses, that would be fabulous. Great, we love that.
That's what I'm saying. There's probably internal, external, and be able to have available information. So we need, I think we need to, so, great discussion, in my opinion, great discussion. And then, at least for me, the takeaway is let's be cognizant of everything you just talked about.
I promise for the next eight weeks, even if I see all sorts of mistakes, I am not gonna do it. Eight weeks.
No, it just goes to John. It just goes to John, that's all. I know where you're coming from, so thank you. All right. Let's get to the next one.
Mickey, before you go, Costa just looked at his watch, it's ten minutes to nine.
Yeah.
Are we cognizant of staff's time here? Do we really need to be doing these tonight?
Yes. So let's move on, and maybe we can not go crazy on the discussions, because the next one's gonna be a fun one, kids. So, let's move to that one. So, review of meeting minutes policy. Who wants to grab that one?
So we've had a conversation after we had moved through June, July, and August of the use of diligent community that we began to narrow the content provided in our meeting minutes to be more succinct. We've looked at, you know, what is required through the Illinois Open Meetings Act for meeting minutes, listed in your memo, the time, the date, time and place of the meeting, the members of the public body recorded as either present or absent, and whether the members were physically present or present by means of video or audio conference, and a summary of discussion on all matters proposed, deliberated, or decided, and a record of any votes taken. So we had offered initially since board meeting light, I guess is a better way to say it. And Commissioner Rebut said, hey, let's put more meat on the bone. I think it was more specific to remarks from visitors, but it might have included some of the other segments of the meeting minutes specific to August, excuse me, June, July, and August.
It was when the recordings were not yet.
Right, right. So we were at that point. So I'm gonna go look to the use of diligent community and the videos that are available on diligent community. And then also not to eliminate, you know, a comment that is made, but to be very succinct on what is that comment about? Some of the meeting minutes that I've worked on in the last forty-eight hours, there's quite a bit of dialogue, either be it from a visitor or a commissioner. So I'm trying to include that to the best of my ability. I run some of that by Steve, so he has seen that. So I'm not trying to minimize everything, but I am trying to be a bit more.
Succinct.
Succinct. Not Cliff Notes, but it's kind of short of Cliff Notes.
John, why are you sitting there doing minutes?
So the outgoing diligent community video will be posted, and our third-party service provider reviews that. She reviews the audio recording as well, the agenda, and then she brings it back. Given a number of the topics being discussed at these board meetings, I take meticulous care to review what is in the video, what is said in the video, and try and make sure that that is an accurate representation of the communication and expand on it as required. So that's what I try and do, is make sure that everything is as broad as possible. She does a really good job. You know, she gives almost a verbatim issuance of the discussion from a meeting. I'm trying to be a bit more focused on what comes in and make sure that it is accurate to what I see in the video.
And it's hard when it's an outside staff person who don't really have any context.
Correct.
So a lot of times, it's hard for them to be succinct.
Now it's spoken in your last name, correct?
It's a learning.
Now, I think the fact that we have video, audio.
Yeah.
It gives us a lot of, within the rules of the Open Meetings Act, it gives us a lot of room to condense these minutes. You've showed me the library board minutes. Skinny isn't the right word, but they have great video with really high-quality audio. It's better to listen to it with your own ears, just like I did with the Village meeting just a couple days ago. I didn't let anybody narrate, interpret what anybody said. I listened to it. That's the best minutes you could have.
Correct.
As far as I'm concerned. So I am absolutely supportive of.
The skeleton.
Condensing, minimizing, within, being respectful to the rules. Written minutes.
Love the timestamp. This was, at this time, you go right to it, boom.
Right. There you go.
The only problem is you can't do a word search on the audio video. You can't. And for anyone who's trying to track a specific subject, I'm all for, for concise minutes. But the problem was, it was so-and-so appeared, and they didn't, you didn't, there was nothing about, you know, could've been so-and-so appeared and were unsupportive effects or were supportive of a wall.
That's where I'm trying to go. There you go.
I think that's great.
Okay. That's where I'm trying to go.
I think we're there.
Okay. Next topic. All right, so you're sure of that, right? Public correspondence, so.
Maybe a policy?
No. It's different. So we receive communications from residents and/or other parties for which they make a statement that they want the material to be maintained as a file in the public record and to be, you know, put into board packet. Legally, we are not responsible to do that, putting it in the board packet. Just by receiving the email, it becomes a public record. So respectful of passionate residents who ask for information to be put in the packet or, you know, provided as a public record, I will count it as a public record to the extent that the commissioners aren't copied, which oftentimes they are, I'll let that, I'll leave that be. But we're, we're gonna move to a perspective of, we're not looking to put ad hoc requested information in our meeting packets. Those will become part of a public record just by receiving the email. If there's litigation-related information, et cetera, we'll obviously forward that on.
And anything that comes in from the public that isn't copied to all commissioners, you're gonna immediately copy it.
Well.
Or as quickly as possible.
Well, it depends, you know, so we talked about there are certain types of communications that could come in to me that have, you know.
All right, exercising your good discretion on that.
Couldn't we solve that, and maybe it already exists, and Gracie, maybe it's there, but for example, the Village, if you wanna copy all of the trustees, there's a link.
We do that.
We have WPD. Do we have that?
Yeah. WPD Board.
And that copies everybody?
Yeah, that is known that. Yeah, that's the one that we established at the very beginning of the process.
And then I think we're kind of mixing apples with oranges. When we have someone who comes to make a statement and they have, they've written a statement, basically, then they read it or then they give it.
In the meeting.
In the meeting.
That would go into the meeting.
And then, then they say, please see that this is included in the record of the meeting. I would presume that where that should go is that would go as an addendum to the minutes.
I think that's a board decision. If they wanna have everybody's written reports or comments added to the minutes, that's a decision they can make. This is your business meeting.
Okay.
And you're not required by the law to include written comments from the public in your minutes. And if you don't.
Once again, this could be.
There's still public records.
Once again, this could be solved through diligent community. If there's a library function, boom, just gets found there, part of the public record.
Let me ask a question, because I'm curious to hear your opinion, but I always, also saw a vigorous head shake from Adam Simon, who is our other legal counsel in the room.
Legal counsel.
Or what?
We agree on everything.
I know, I know, you do, I know. Which is amazing. Obviously, clearly all trained, but what would, what would you add to what Steve has already said?
Like Steve said, it's your business meeting, and you have a right to efficiently conduct your meeting. So you have rules for public comment that limit how long people can speak for. You encourage people to submit things in writing. When they submit things to you in writing, they are public records, so anyone else in the community can ask for them. But the minutes reflect a summary of the conduct of the meeting as approved by the park board. If you allow every member of the community to have the power to say what needs to be discussed at a meeting, it'd be.
No.
Out of control. So that's why you have a narrow, that's why you have a public comment period. They have a right to say what they wanna say for three minutes, and then you can conduct your business that you planned for and have reports on.
I think you'd be better off not to put written comments from the public in the minutes. I think it would be better to post them somewhere else or just keep them as a public record and help us in the executive direction.
I, I, I don't think they have to be. I have no client, I have no clients who attach written comments as addenda to them.
Yes.
Neither do I.
Yeah. I think it.
Here, nine. One.
I'm trying to get cross, pro, anti visibility, and so one way to do that is to post all those to diligent community.
Yeah, I mean, you do have issues, First Amendment issues that can start to surface there, too, if you post everything that the public gives you on your website. So there are some things that I'm sure we can talk about at a later date that would, you know, address that.
Well, there is a recommendation at the bottom of page two of the memo regarding if we receive written correspondence requesting consideration of a matter, the president and the executive director shall determine whether the placement finds its way to the agenda, et cetera. So just trying to be mindful of getting content to the commissioners, but also managing the number of requests to come in that they just, hey, put this into the meeting packet and make it a public record. So we've already achieved the public record aspect, right? It's how often are we requested? I have three sitting here that were supposed to put this into the meeting packet for tonight. For tonight.
Why can't they be posted on diligent community by the citizen? Why can't we have?
No, no, no way. No way. That's like when Zoom came out, people popped up.
Have all three of those been circulated to Warren for consideration?
They send them to.
You're saying you have three from the public?
I've seen it. I can think of one, I don't know the other.
Yeah. All right, so we need to move along. So listen, if people are wanting to add stuff to the agenda, the board members, I mean, these guys are gonna go through that stuff and decide what's on the agenda. I think that's something substantial.
I think diligent has worked well, just so you know. Warren, they got the committee. I get rejected, so I get rejected. Sometimes I get accepted. I got accepted.
Get excited.
I think it's very efficient.
That's John Peterson's authority, not mine.
All three were copied to all commissioners.
That's John Peterson is the authority on what needs to be added. All right, so this is something that doesn't end tonight. You can just keep looking at hours, minutes. And I guess thank God for videotaping them. And next time, once I make sure. All right, we need to get moving on.
Are we updating our retroactive board packets?
Fine. They're on videotape.
Can we move on?
Let's move on.
Okay.
All right, we'll cover that.
We'll cover it. Before we move on.
All right, so the next one's gonna be a fun topic.
Before we move on, hold on. To my knowledge, there was only one board packet that kept getting updated. It went from sixty-nine pages to three-hundred-and-sixty-four pages.
For June ninth.
Hopefully, we're done with that, and we're never gonna do that again. Are we done with that?
So that, so that change was after questions of the board.
Was whose request? Whose request? It was not mine.
We're moving on.
Okay, all right.
All right. You know, after a three-hour meeting, how much do we get done? So item 5.3, so let's really have fun now. WPD Policy Manual Original Update, Media Policy. So what we don't have in our manual, and what, I'll say this to it, it's not in the manual. And again, I'm going by history, my time on the board, this was never an issue. So it was a given, but I'm putting it in the manual, that if there was a request by the press or anyone else, that if there was a statement coming out from the Park District, that the person or body doing that was the executive director. If it wasn't, the executive director was not available, then the board president was charged to deal with that, that particular request for dealing with the media. And it was never an issue. But that has changed. So I think it's now a refocus and really a commitment to go back to, so I will read this. It's a draft. It's also from the vice room counsel, so thank you. So the media policy.
Mickey, before you read it, I think it was Adam who suggested that we needed to focus on this during our last executive session. And I would like to make a proposal that before we discuss this in open session, we have the opportunity to hear from Adam.
This is a business, this is a business session.
In an executive session, because this was your suggestion, as I recall, am I correct?
No, I prompted the discussion.
I, so.
I asked.
Okay.
And this is, this is not a matter of closed session. This is a matter for open business.
Well, it is if it relates to litigation.
No, this is only a policy manual update. We don't have anything in the policy manual. It's a policy manual consideration. We're reviewing it for the first time tonight.
Okay.
We're reviewing it for the first time tonight. If there's, if there's consideration of it, we can do that before we sit down.
Right.
I don't know if you need to read it, if you want to read it, everybody has it.
Well, I want, I want to say one thing.
Yes, please.
This policy is about speaking for the Park District. If any, this isn't intended to take away your individual opinions. Not only can you take away your individual opinions, you all have First Amendment rights. When you speak, though, and you identify yourself as a commissioner in any form, people assume you're speaking for the Park District. Whether it's in the newspaper, or at the Village, or the library, or wherever. You cannot represent yourself as a commissioner when you're speaking about your personal opinion unless it represents the policy adopted by the board. And that's what this policy is intended to address. Short and simple.
Steve, do you wanna go, Pike?
No, I think that's exactly right. I think it's very important that individual commissioners not purport to speak on behalf of the board unless they're expressly authorized and/or there's consensus on what's, not only that they're authorized, but that there's consensus on what's to be communicated. So completely agree with Adam's point that, you know, it's important to have a policy that says you can't, in your official capacity, speak on behalf of the district.
Does this mean that you shouldn't speak at all, or if you do speak, you should say you cannot identify me as a commissioner because I am solely speaking as a resident?
That's what I recommend usually, is just to say, if you're gonna go speak as an individual, you have to say, I'm speaking as an individual, not as a representative.
So do not.
And predicate your comments with that.
The policy needs to say that.
If somebody calls you and asks you for a statement, you can ask, are you asking me for my personal opinion or are you asking me for the Park District's policy? And let them ask, let them respond to you on what they're asking for. And if they say, I'm asking you for the board policy, then you can say, oh, I'm gonna refer you to John, to Mr. Peterson, because he's our spokesperson, and he has the responsibility to answer these requests. If they're asking you for a personal opinion, then you've made it clear what it means, and it's easy to do.
And hopefully, that member of the press. And hopefully that member of the press honors that.
Right, that's why I, that's why I recommend the affirmative statement that I am not speaking on behalf of the board. Because a lot of times reporters will just ignore that distinction.
May I speak here? Because, because I have received some calls and I suspect that may be one of the reasons why you want to identify this since May of this year. Whenever I receive a call from someone like Alex, I always say, I cannot speak for the board. I am, I am a sole individual. I cannot do that. And I refer them to our executive director for additional comment. But I will not be silenced if I wish to speak what Colleen Root, as a citizen of the Village of Oneeka, wants to say. That is my personal comment. And I am speaking in the capacity as a citizen of the Village of Oneeka.
My, my opening comment, I agree with that 100%.
Great.
Me too.
But the policy doesn't say that. And then there have been.
That's because it's the board policy.
Then we should suggest any modifications or amendments. Right, so this was published. Hopefully, everybody had their turn to read it. And if there are edits or recommended changes in the interest of time.
Let's do it.
Let's do it, which is exactly what we do. Bring it back for review of policy.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then Alex, you can remember to always say that Ms. Root is speaking in her individual capacity. When she is, right?
Excuse me. If I speak to the press, I speak as in my individual capacity.
I understand that.
I think, Mr. Adams, you have had some problems in the last week in understanding what I'm trying to communicate. One of those issues, the miscommunication, went to the Illinois AG and necessitated a correction. So please do not speak for me.
I wasn't, I was asking Alex to report that you were speaking as an individual. If you were speaking as an individual, I wasn't telling, making any statement about what you were saying. Alex, go ahead.
Okay, so we need to move on. To be further beaten into the dead, we're just. Alright, members of the directors, 7.1, update on Library and Park.
Yeah, so the Library and Park has closed. So thanks to, again, to Commissioner Seaman, Commissioner Cotto.
David Seaman. I'm sorry?
David Seaman.
Well, I said Commissioner Seaman.
Charlie, did I say Commissioner Seaman?
Oh, you did. John did all the work on this. But you know what? I put 10 inquiries into them.
You were certainly a driving force behind it.
The update is that Costa Cattulus and I are working with Monica Dobroski to execute the removal of the Library and Park sign. Is it now out? So we're pretty much done with everything. So it's now 100% with the Michigan Northfield Public Library District.
Where it's signed?
Yeah, where it should be. It should have been there long ago, so.
It's off the vote schedule?
Put that thing there.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta. Okay. There you go. Alright, bye.
Anything else on that?
No, next one. Let me skip to two because we're gonna, we're gonna get probably logged down to 7.2 and 7.3. But legal expenses, just so you're aware, they are $139,214.57 in total. I just received another invoice from Ansel Blain, so it will go to essentially $148 through November. So we're gonna fall short of probably $180, which I thought we might, but not, not that far.
Not to be controversial, how much is the FOIA related expense? I saw in that most recent bill, the majority of it, or not the majority, the largest component of the Robbins-Shorts bill was FOIA. What is FOIA year to date?
Well, so I'll have to get back to you on that because I have to go out to the elders.
Don't make any inquiry. Don't, just don't.
Okay.
Got to put in inquiry, too.
Other than that, it doesn't matter, of course.
So I was, so we're starting to get a bunch of. Also, the, just to give everybody an opportunity to be communicating with different forms of government beyond the Oneeka Park District, your statement of economic interests request will come to you shortly. So your staff members are on this list, as are all commissioners in this room, as well as Eric Blesson. And our new commissioners also will be added out of an abundance of caution, even though this is more in arrears than it is forward looking in nature. But I'll contact the two commissioners to make sure they're part of the agreement. So just be on the lookout for that. Each of you had asked for an update on the response to the IDNR for 205 Sheridan Road and the permit application, so that's included in the packet. Happy to answer your questions. The draft was circulated, you know, before the deadline to submit it on January 2nd. And based on responses to the draft, I updated it accordingly. Steve was instrumental in the adjustments. And Costa was great in the initial drafting of the document. So, but that response is, is part of the meeting packet.
Alright, next one, 7.3, update on correspondence with the Illinois Attorney General's Office of Meetings Act.
Yeah, so as of, so today's the 12th. So as of yesterday, late, you know, mid afternoon, Teresa Lim, as the supervising attorney with the Public Access Bureau, did issue her determination that the matter had been resolved and does now require an issuance of a binding opinion and that her letter served to close the matter. So that particular issue is, is closed. I know that there was a representation made that I also forwarded to the board. Representation made that then Commissioner Root responded to. And Commissioner Steve, excuse me, Counsel Adams has responded to that particular piece of the puzzle. So each commissioner has it, but that is about as late breaking as it can be. So I have no, no insight on it. But every commissioner has the communications from Commissioner Root.
Well, I copy all the commissioners.
And from Steve Adams.
Bottom line, we're good for the June stuff and, and other than that, this person is comfortable with where we are in terms of publishing, issuing and all of these things.
That we're caught up through November and the December 1st meeting minutes are effectively done. And I'm working on December 15th, which I'll present January 26th, a positive report.
Yep. Okay, board liaison reports. Board liaison reports, again, D36 and 69. Just respectful of D36, respecting D36 and the village. The village did acquire the property at the end of 1205 Sunset as a part of Stormwater Project. And D36 advised me that they will not be ready to have any further conversations until at least February. Okay, any other liaison reports? Okay, check reports. Costa, have you rested up?
A lot of water, a lot of dry. Quick update on Stormwater. Sure, a lot of you were, with the holiday break, that, or the village planned the closure of Tippard Road to make those improvements. Those improvements have been completed, but that phase of the Stormwater work, we continue to move on. We're on plan, are on task and on plan. I know Dave Burley mentioned a few things. We're working through a couple items. Those interference with some electrical and force made that was being addressed. Working with the village to identify the cost and where that comes, so there's potentially, but there, sorry, David, but there are going to be unforeseen, as with any construction when you're doing renovation work, so.
We do have contingency, right?
We do have a contingency and that's built in. Staff will discuss with village staff as far as who should pay for this. It's, you know, my opinion that this is something that should be taken in consideration by the village, but we'll sort that out, keep it on board. As we continue on with the project, though, there are a couple of curveballs that we've seen thus far directly related to the project. But, you know, the village has done a great job to help manage those and direct, you know, direct the repairs as needed where they belong amongst, you know, the contractor and the repair worker that with selected subcontractors. But we're moving on in great, great form. As we continue on, we're going to start back up in the woodland areas. If you might have seen, and I've known, we've heard from the community multiple times and the even commissioners have addressed the quality of Crown Woods as well as some of our other woodland areas. We're going to continue on with that. As budgeted as part of the budget presentation, there are contractual services that we're going to be looking to utilize to P zone associates that we've utilized in the past for preservation of the woodland areas. So we're going to, we're looking to sign off on some of those contracts as they're presented to the park board. I don't foresee that being an issue, but I want to get on their way. So that's going to be prior to the approval of the budget itself formally. But it's in the budget. We have no issue, so we're going to continue on with that. And then we're working in collaboration with Recreation Department as some simple improvements to help with the flow for Lloyd as it relates to directional, directional improvements for ease and access and better sight lines. We get better, better visibility down there for traffic. So those are things that are all going on in the, in the background, so.
Okay, that's it. Thanks, Costa. Gracie?
Respectfully, I was assessed to be here to replace Kyle, so I don't really have anything prepared.
That's a good one, Gracie. Can you speak on behalf of, I'll get to jump. Can you speak for Kyle?
Yeah, so the one thing he would love to be able to report is he's advancing our relationships and, and opportunities on a sailing program. So we're trying to move as fast as we can, attacking back.
Sailing term.
More for the company. But there have been a couple, three or four groups. One has expressed a high degree of interest. So we're, we're advancing that as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send you a letter.
Jim?
Just going to go a quick, little bit more detail. Christina, to answer your question earlier about the Moody's rating, it's just a timeout, I'll just summarize. They say the district's debt and pension burdens are moderate relative to operations. The district's reserves are strong and will continue to be a credit strength for the foreseeable future due to a resurgence in user demand after the pandemic. The available fund balance across operating funds is strong. And just for a little context, our current debt load, including the $3 million we drew down from Wind Trust, is only 25% of what our statutory debt limit allows us to borrow. So we are not borrowing anywhere near what we could, which means that we're not nearly as leveraged as many of the other people who borrow money. So we're in a good position eventually. That's why Moody's rates are rating.
I, I would add that when we looked at financing, we had one person come back, one of the seven firms that came back and presented and said, oh, you can borrow up to $30 million. And our constraint was how much can we service? How much can we responsibly service? So that's, that's what caused us to be more conservative. I do want to point out that one of the reasons they probably upgraded us is that we do have $5 million left over from the original bond issue.
Yes.
They didn't see the three that just came down.
Well, I communicated that to them. They're aware of that three.
Okay, so the three, very end of December. But those are earmarked for the beach and they haven't spent those. So they look at us now and they think, oh, you've got these great reserves. I would also argue that having a triple A rating is very nice. But as a bond person, it's not very efficient because it means you have excess reserves and you're not using them for programming, number one. And number two, the credit spread between the triple A and the double A is not really significant. And the cost is all the additional reserves that they want you to hold. David is not in line with me. So I would say have a modestly positive or a moderately positive rating, the appropriate level of reserves, and your focus should be your programming. Job is, I mean, there's people that have five years of reserves named a triple A rating and I'm like, they are not doing their job. So there, there you go. That's my time.
Well, we know where we have the reserves.
Yes, we, we do.
We have that. Jay, do you got another one?
Yep, so I just want to provide an update. So at the board meeting on October 27th, we talked about there was a motion made for shore frontage allocated to the Dog Beach shall not be less than 170 feet and not be greater than 270 feet. The area must include a secure boundary to prevent dogs from straying beyond the quarters of the Dog Beach while off-leash. The electric gate system should be relocated to the beach or boardwalk level to afford public access to the remainder of the Centennial Beach. Dog Beach boundaries shall accommodate public passage along the lakefront in keeping with the IDNR guidelines. Item D, that last red item, was amended in the motion. Dog Beach boundaries shall accommodate public passage along the lakefront. So using that, staff has determined it's in the best interest of the agency to secure the Dog Beach now because we are not compliant with Cook County Animal or Lady's Control Ordinance and the requirements of the Park District Risk Management Agency's Dog Access to Park and Recreation Areas Guide. So we've created a temporary fence plan to address the above. Cost estimates for the materials?
About $5,000.
About $5,000. And we've determined it's in the best interest of the agency to complete the project for the temporary fence in-house. What would it cost to go outside? Can't recall what.
It'd be better half of eating $20,000.
So the, the fence will run adjacent to the north and south boundaries of the Centennial Public Beach, affording as much Dog Beach as possible, but not without encroaching on the prior property to the north of Centennial Beach or to the south of Centennial Beach. Gates will be provided so that we can ensure that the public trust doctrine is still recognized so people have passage through the dock park area. Galvanized fencing material identified by Costa and the team. And we'll, we'll install this as soon as possible, subject to weather and materials. I just wanted to give you an update. There's a, there's movement afoot. We are trying to comply with regulatory and safety risk management issues. And it's for a temporary fence. We are, we're, you know, Costa, you've done some great design work to ensure that we have a minimum obliteration, you know, possibility. So you want to provide some insight on that?
Sure. As part of that design, we'll, we'll set the sections that are going to be lakeward side where they're going to be able to be broken away. So if ice or anything else is formed against them, they wouldn't share and essentially take the whole fencing with them. That was a previous, you know, design that we put in place before. It did last, and as John suggested, this is a temporary format to be able to secure the site safely, keep us within Cook County as well as the regulations, but still allow that pass through for those people that want to enjoy the lakefront. So I think this is a, it's kind of an easy, I don't want to say easy because I'm not, you know, I'll say easy for me, not for my, I'm just going to be working it. But it's, it's a way to get in compliance fairly inexpensive to achieve what we've been missing now for a little bit of time.
Costa, do you have other things?
I just want to make one comment. And I apologize with everything going on, I just, I didn't flip back to my notes. But I wanted to make mention, as those of you might see or might be involved with paddle, there has been great progress over the last week with paddle courts, our seven and eight being installed and being erected out there. So Oneeka Platform Tennis is looking forward to that. I just want to educate the board that even though the courts look like they're done, there are utilities that need to go to support those. The lighting, the electric for the lighting, the gas for the heaters, as well as gaining occupancy from the village, which require us, I believe, and I got to affirm this with Anita over, or the village of Oneeka, my department. But the pathways to gain access need to be included, too. But I want to affirm that. We are working as fast as we can. Those pathways are asphalt pathways that need to be installed. Plans are shut right now and that's probably going to be a spring installation. So even though the courts might look done and people might be envious to utilize them, trust us as staff, we are moving as fast as we can to get those open and operational for that group to enjoy.
Just another thing, Costa, is working.
There you go. So, and I would say to board members, if you haven't driven down the driveway to head towards the clubhouse, I mean, the courts look awesome. The frames are up, so. And then there are eight foot by eight foot box covers that are lined up as you get there. So just go there, if you're familiar with the old view and look at the way it looks now, it's really an incredible thing to see. Just to walk from the parking lot to the clubhouse.
You see noting changes.
So that's really pretty impressive. I would not suggest you go out to the golf course unless you've got good boots and the craziness, but it might be interesting.
Is there, is there a plan to do a press release when the paddle courts are done? Or something?
Along with the.
I'm sure it'll be touring other parts. And a party.
Okay. Any attorney reports? No? Okay. Alright, so that's it. That brings us to the end of the irregular agenda. May I have motion go in the closed section pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash section 2 C1, where the appointment of compensation, discipline of performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. 5 ILCS 120 slash section 2, excuse me, C5. 5 ILCS 120 slash section 2, excuse me, C5, for purchase of lease of property. 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C6, in the setting of a price for sale of the lease of property and. 5 ALCS 120 slash 2C, a letter for litigation when action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before Circuit Court or Administrative Court Bureau or when public body finds that an action is probable or in.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay, Dave?
Commissioner Arshinbo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson. Oops, sorry. Commissioner Rapp. Commissioner Rude.
Yes.
Commissioner Seaman. Commissioner Cotto.
Yes.
Commissioner James.